Officially call the meeting to order at 6:05. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor, May I be in?
Here.
Councilwoman Capino.
Here.
Councilwoman Palmer.
Here.
Councilwoman Lozano.
Here.
Mayor Vandenberg.
Here. Next, we will have silent prayer followed by the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well done, everybody. Madam Clerk, would you please read the replay statement?
This meeting of the California Department of Public Safety and Public Service on Metro Cable 14, or the Government Affairs Channel on the ConCath and Polydive.
Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at metro14live.zaccounty.gov. Today's meeting replays Friday, April 21st at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, April 22nd at 9:00 a.m. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/MetroCable14.
Thank you. Next is agenda approval, additions and/or deletions of what pleases the council. Anything? Seeing nothing from the council, we'll move on to item G, presentations. The first and only subject is presentations by California Consortium of Addiction Programs and Professionals.
Hi, thank you. I wish to thank Honorable Mayor and City Manager for allowing me to present tonight. I appreciate it. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and council members. Tonight, I would like to just walk you through some ideas that our organization has. We've been looking for a smaller type of project to address addiction and mental health issues in a smaller environment. There's lots of resources being sent to Los Angeles, to the Bay Area, where the homeless you've seen on the news or even driving by has become way out of control, but there's not a whole lot being directed to cities our size. So I thought I would come and share some of the knowledge that I have from our organization so that you could be more aware of what's out there and, more importantly, what's coming down the pipeline to us. Oh, I'm working two machines, sorry. Is it on?
Side button flipped on. Side button.
I got it, I got it. I had to try every button first. Ah, that's much better. That's me. Some of you know me from my time on the planning commission here as friends, but I'm also the Vice President of Government Affairs and Corporate Communications for CCAP, the California Consortium of Addiction Programs and Professionals. Been doing that for about 30 years, so I've seen a lot of changes and evolution in treatment approaches and community approaches to mental health and substance use disorder. My organization is the largest consortium that does this kind of work. We're a nonprofit. We have about 30,000 addiction-focused professionals that we represent, 500 agencies and organizations, including treatment programs, and so we're living. And we also represent people in recovery by being an arm of Faces and Voices, which is a recovery group nationally. We're their California affiliate. We have worked on state-level homeless grants, programs, funding. We focus really, though, on creating access to quality addiction and mental health treatment, expanding access and improving quality. So I want to talk a little bit about the unique aspects of small-town homelessness. And I hate to call this a small town. I know we've even surpassed the rural designation now. But most important, it's to remember, these are our people. I've often heard council members say they actually went to high school with some of the folks that we see that are frequent flyers through our law enforcement out there, living by the river. They are here because they belong here. They grew up here. Their relatives, friends are here. They're familiar with the atmosphere here. So they are actually our people. We're not Portland. They're not being shipped from Montana to here or other places. They came from here and they live here. The problem is still small. It may not feel like it. It's still small and it's growing. But the great thing about Galt is people want to help. There are lots of people who see homeless and feel as though they have an urge inside them to do something to help them. On the other hand, their people are angry, and I'm sure you hear about it all the time. Why can't we lock these people up? Why can't we just arrest them and remove them from our surroundings? But I'm here to tell you that that anger is also passion, and if led in the right direction, can actually help the situation by combining forces with those who are angry and fed up and those who wish to do something about the problem in Galt. So I get it. You look at this gentleman, and this isn't one of our homeless, but homeless somewhere. He's shoeless. He's holding a teddy bear of some sort. He's been beaten. He has scars on his face. I'm sure that officer is not really happy to be interacting with him. I'm sure that that's not the solution to this man's problems. On the other hand, you see people asking for contributions to their lifestyle, and many people feel compelled to help by giving. Our churches in town feel a need to help the homeless. So what's a person to do? It seems like neither of these situations is working. Handouts endlessly only develop multigenerational dependence, don't really cure the problem, and we're not going to wrest our way out of this. We tried that in the 80s in arresting people for drugs, just ended up incarcerating mainly young, low-income, black and brown people. So I get it. Everyone here is frustrated. What is the solution? What can we do? So I want to step back for a minute and explain to you how treatment actually works, because there's this misconception that people will say, "Oh, I have a problem. I'm drinking too much. It's causing a problem in my life. I'm using too much drugs. I got arrested. I have a problem. I'm going to ask for care." And then magically, that care is provided. That's how some people think this works. They think that the people out there in the river or people who are constantly cycling through our criminal justice system just don't want help. That's the case sometimes, actually, but really what happens -- there's my graphic. Really what happens, and I know this is hard to read and I'm not going to go through it all, but addiction and mental health is a wide-ranging condition. There are people up there on Addiction Island, which is on your top left, who don't even know they have a problem. They may be binge-drinking. They may be having some sort of impact in their life from their substance use or mental health issue. Some will need to go to treatment, which is on the bottom, because their disease has progressed to a point where it can't be handled through abstinence or changing one's behavior without clinical intervention. Others may just decide, "I've had enough. I hit 30 and I don't like being hung over," so they move over to Recovery Island. Lots of barriers in between trying to access service, trying to put one's life together after they've received service. So it's not as clear-cut as, "I want help. Somebody gives it to me. I spend 30 days in a program, and that silver bullet fixed me, and I'm well." That's not how it works. What really happens is a person who comes out of treatment typically goes back to being surrounded by those who supported their youth. They have usually lost connections to community, family. They've burnt a lot of bridges. They're stigmatized. They still feel dehumanized for their lifestyle. And in some cases, particularly these folks that we have out here in Galt, I don't know if you're aware, but Sacramento County, up until, I want to say about five years ago, did not treat adults who were on Medicaid for substance use disorder. You had to be pregnant or postpartum to get services. So to say someone who is so advanced in their addiction and the accompanying mental health issues that happen when you've had decades of addiction is someone who just doesn't want help is not a true statement of what has happened to these people. With no insurance before the Affordable Care Act, you couldn't get insurance. And without Medicaid in Sacramento covering these services, these people were left alone for sometimes 20 or 30 years. So when you look at those people that are really suffering, there's a reason that they are. And I'm not saying it's not somewhat their fault, but I'm saying the system did not provide adequate response to a health need that they had for decades. So that's created some real issues with a certain portion of our homeless. So what really happens with treatment? So someone says, "I've had enough. Today, I'm feeling really bad. I want to change." So the first thing they'll have to do is get on the phone, navigate, find a phone number to get through to Sacramento County to request services. There will be a phone screening. Depending on the type of substance they're using, they may need detoxification before they can even enter treatment. So the first barrier is find out how to get a phone number, find out how to get a person on the phone to talk to. The next barrier is, okay, you're using opioids or you're using alcohol. That requires a medical detoxification. So that's another barrier. I've got to get to a hospital, and I don't know which one I'm going to go or how I'm going to do it. Sometimes there are medical treatments that have to happen, too, and all people entering treatment have to have a medical clearance. So there's a doctor's appointment and a TB test. So it's not as easy as, "Okay, I'm ready." So imagine yourself, you're impaired by substance use disorder and mental health, having to go through these issues. Once these are resolved, the waiting time may begin, and it may be weeks or months before that person receives care. So once they do receive care, let me tell you, treatment is hard, and mental health needs are usually not addressed. They usually have co-occurring needs that go unmet. When they get done, how do you start a life again? How do you get a job? How do you apply to live somewhere when your credit is ruined and you haven't worked for years? And there is no housing for these folks. So this is what we're facing. So how do we work our way out of this? Let's just go into that for a minute or two here. So disease progression is really important. Not all of our homeless people have the same level of disease progression. We have some functioning people who are using or have mental health issues, but they're still able to work, and they just don't have a place to live. So that's one level. So that'd probably be around the one. They might need some outpatient treatment to help them. We have others who are down at the level four, who need medically managed intensive services. So outreach to them is going to be really difficult, and it's going to be really difficult to place them. So it's really important to meet people where they are. One size doesn't fit all. So you have to remember, does a person want care? Back to that journey of recovery. Maybe it's a young person who just doesn't think they have a problem yet. And are we offering care specific to their needs, like that chart just showed? And are they even able to seek care? Some of them are so far into their disease that they cannot help themselves. So what are we to do? Okay, this is the news. I don't know if you've watched this through any television reporting, but the governor has created something called the Care Court, and it was passed last year. It's going into implementation into a couple of select counties. Ours is not one this year, but next year, all counties will have care courts. So care courts are what I like to call conservatorship light. Conserving someone is very difficult in California. It's a years-long process to prove someone should have all of their rights taken away and have all of their care needs and responsibilities taken care of by another person. So what the Care Court does, it's called the Community Assistance Recovery and Empowerment Court. It's a framework for people to come together, put together a case, have medical professionals, clinical professionals, law enforcement, yes, family members, people in the community who may care about this person or care not to have them in their environment anymore, making a mess of things. So this is aimed at taking those folks that are unable to or unwilling to accept care and putting them in front of a care court that will determine their care. I don't know if my clicker's working still. There we go. So it's a court-ordered response. It's a 12-month plan, which will involve their medical needs, their behavioral health needs, et cetera. And if they fail that plan, that person is deemed to be immediately able to be hospitalized or conserved at that point. So it's a shortcut to conservatorship. Gives the person a chance to do what they need to do. If they are unable to, then we move to the next level. So there's a lot of money coming from this that Galt could benefit from. $14 billion multi-year investment, 55,000 new housing units, $10 billion in behavioral health care. So this is supported with a budget so that the care courts can work and function as they're designed. So what do we do here in Galt, given care courts and what we have available? Well, what we need are social workers, peer navigators, peer support professionals, and perhaps a director or coordinator of homeless assistance and abatement. What does that look like? I know we have a social worker, and that's provided under your Mobile Crisis Unit. Notice the name, Mobile Crisis Unit. That's for someone who's in crisis. That person comes here once a week, works with some of our homeless, yes. But what we really need is a social worker who can work with some of our upstream needs, the families that are about to have a person displaced and become homeless. Because once we rescue someone from homelessness, there's a pipeline of new people to be homeless. You can ask chief today, "Who's the next family that's going to have a family member who's living at the river?" He can tell you. He can tell you exactly which families, because his officers have been to their home. So having a social worker to address upstream needs, respond to high school students who may be couch surfing and have told their counselor at school that they need help, and someone who could supervise peer navigators and peer support specialists, which I will go over on the next slide. So peer navigators and peer specialist supporters are really important, because many people who are facing addiction or mental health in our town are unable to access the care that they are paying for with their insurance or are mandated to receive under Medicaid. So they need someone who knows the systems and can get them access to their care. Once they have care, peer supporters are the other end of that. They're the ones who go to meetings with people, who take time for people with early in recovery, help with medication adherence, which is really important with people with mental health challenges, and really cheer them on and be there as people with lived experience to help them through navigating early recovery. So the other issue here in the city is that we don't have someone who can kind of manage an approach to our homeless situation. So a director or coordinator of homeless assistance and abatement could coordinate such a team of some part-time workers to address some of these needs, make short and long-term plans, and provide representation at regional meetings, et cetera, on homeless for California. Possible duties, they could hire staff, research rural homeless approaches. I know that Australia has some really interesting approaches to homeless youth in particular. Coordinate with law enforcement, identify unhoused individuals, and create plans specific to each one, which talks about their needs instead of everyone should do this. Investigate family and community support. This is the biggie, to have somebody here at the city who can follow through on a care court case, somebody who can put the documentation together, gather the professionals who need to do the case, present the case, follow up and make sure that person is adhering to their requirements of their care court mandate, and follow up with sending them for conservatorship if they do not. So that's really important. And who's going to do that in this town? There's no person that's responsible or could be responsible for that. So that person could also locate grants for unhoused persons. I've talked to my boss about a possible pilot project with the city to do something really unique here in the city and do a rural homeless project for the city of Galt. We can talk to Senator Eggman or Assemblymember Flora and have them introduce legislation to get this paid for and actually do a project for the state to look at and say, "This is how Galt handled it. We identified this need specific to this type of homeless, and here's our plan. Here's our outcomes to help other cities throughout the state." I know that one of our homeless issues, which these people are not technically homeless, but people mistake the persons in group homes in our area as homeless because they look as such and cause interference at our local businesses. So some cities that I've worked with in Southern California actually set up hotlines and complaint lines so that substandard housing -- I don't want to call them facilities, because they're homes, but these group homes, where people are being abused, they're being taken advantage of, they're not being treated properly, putting some heat on those bad operators is a way to get some of the perception that we have homeless wandering around. If you put heat on those operators by turning them in for substandard care of their residents, we can chase off some of these bad actors who are letting their people roam around and get into trouble. That homeless assistance director could also work with these group homes. Some of them are well-meaning. They just need more training on how to keep their residents busy. They don't need to be panhandling at Walmart. They need some help in how to design better programs to make sure that their residents are happy. That person could help with managing debris and abatement issues with the county. I know that takes up a lot of our law enforcement time. I'll finish this off in just a minute, so I just wanted to throw a few more things out here you can all read, so I won't go over all of them. But some simple things, like some of the folks that are on that verge, who could keep employment, who could keep jobs, helping them with locating a place where they can shower. Also, having a person who can get people into recovery residences, and those are places where people have to be clean and sober to live in. They have the support of other members of the house that are also living a clean and sober lifestyle, so somebody could help that. Somebody could help with a mentorship program. If we have somebody who's gone through treatment, they're living in a recovery residence, and they need a second chance, I know we have businesses in town who would help them. But we need somebody to be doing that, to be saying, "We have James. He's not had a job for two years. He's clean and sober for two months. He's been living in his recovery residence. He needs a job. Are you willing to give him a second chance?" And to do that outreach to our business community, to see if we can get these people into some sort of meaningful employment. There's also regular homeless, where people just don't have a place to live because it's too expensive. This person, who could be the director, could create a housing exchange. We have a lot of residents that have extra room. They may want to rent, but they're afraid. Maybe we could set up background checks for them, so they feel comfortable letting that woman, who's now divorced and has a child and doesn't have enough rent, needs shared housing. So there are a lot of things that a person in this position could do. They could work with the charities here in town. They could do an anti-stigma campaign so that people who are reintegrating to our community don't feel estranged when they come back. They could even do things that are unique, like educate people in town about accessory dwelling units, which is building an in-laws quarter on your property that's now allowed by state law, so that we could have places that are more affordable for some of our young people or some of our people that are just struggling to pay for a larger home to rent. So these are just suggestions, but this is what I think could be a good plan, is to have a part-time, a half-time social worker who could deal with upstream needs as needed. Peer navigators and peer supporters, they're not master's degree people. They're usually junior college or less, so they are less expensive, but to have some of them available to help people through the process of getting into treatment, getting their mental health needs taken care of, and support in early recovery. And then a director of homeless assistance and abatement, that would be for a fully $150,000 salary. That's a full professional. Don't know that that's the absolute need here. Maybe that would be a recent college graduate. I used two in my shop, very dedicated, very smart, very motivated to help the world-type young people, who might be interested in this kind of position. Support costs. If you can't get treatment when you need it, you have lost that person. So we have treatment programs near town. We have River City Recovery. I know them well. Their cash pay is $5,000 a month. So to be able to say to a person who says, "I want treatment today," "Okay, let's go." Put you in the car, take you to the doctor, to get you checked out, and take you over to River City Recovery. To have a fund that could do that for two beds year-round would be amazing. And that's just like a budget. We don't know that we'd have two people every month that would want treatment, but surely to have treatment on demand could really help some people to make that bridge to get into treatment. Recovery residence beds, that amount there, I don't know what the 64, 800, I think it was. I think I was tired when I was making this budget, sorry. But the concept is not to give handouts, to go, "Okay, come to Galt, because we're going to give you money for rent." That's not what this program is about. This program is about, you do the work to say, "I want treatment for my mental health, my substance use disorder." When you do that, you successfully complete, we will pay three months of sober living. That's not pick an apartment, here you go. That's, we've vetted the sober living. We like the house manager there. We know that there's quasi-supervision there, that somebody's watching what's going on and making sure that it's a drug-free environment. We will pay three months so you can get on your feet, and then the next three months, we will pay half of your rent, because you should start working by then. So this gives people a chance to reorder their brains, get their lives together, reconnect to their families, show what they're doing in early recovery, and gives them a short six-month time period, three months of -- this is a shared room, so the worst thing you can do with a person with addiction is let them have their own room. We don't need privacy in early recovery. So you would be paying for one bed in a bedroom for this person for three months. So that averages about 600 is what the going rate is for a recovery residence bed, and then you would pay 300 for the next three months. That's six months to get a person started. So and then some on-demand physicals, because try and get somebody in that doesn't even have a Medicaid card, doesn't happen. You're done. The hurdle is not going to get met. So if you have a fund that can pay cash for physicals, get the people into treatment, provide some after-services as far as a place to live while they restart their lives. So that's not a huge cost. I mean, it's huge as taxpayer money, but we believe with that sum of money, you could really have an impact on homeless without having handouts, a homeless shelter, free housing, a meal place. Those are the things when people think about homeless assistance and abatement, they think about giveaways and attracting more, like Nevada City, where we've built an entire empire around housing people and drawing people to that area. That's not what I'm suggesting. I don't think it works. What I'm suggesting is that Galt is unique. We have kind Christian people, Muslim people, Hindu people in this town who want to help. We have business owners who know what it's like to be down on your luck. I think there is a reservoir of human capital and hopefully a reservoir of budget capital here with this city, that we could actually do something exciting, we could actually make this happen. Just to mention, and none of these are for sure, but I want you to know that these funds are out there, because I understand, creating new government. If we hire this position, then we're stuck. Then we got to, how do we fire this person when we run out of money? Well, the care court funding is coming. We have opioid settlement funds. I know you've signed some over to the county, but more are on their way. This could be a county collaborative effort. I still believe there are more resources to be had from the county. We could pass legislation to do this as a pilot project and ask for general fund money to pay for it. We could also seek grants. There are a lot of grants, believe it or not. A lot, a lot of money is out there for this type of project. And then you still have your American Rescue Plan Act that I think you've dedicated somewhere, but I don't know that that's been inked. So this is a menu of continuing streams of funds that could be out there. So with that, I'll take any questions, and again, I really appreciate your deference in letting me present tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Daly. Is there any questions by the council?
Yeah, I just have a couple of quick questions regarding -- I like the county collaboration. Traditionally, this has been a set of services that the county's been responsible for, and as I'll report later, I was down at the Capitol last week and talking to some legislators, and I think everybody's in agreement that maybe the county hasn't quite been getting the funding necessary. And so one question I had was the care court funding. I'm not familiar with how that's going to roll out. I haven't read the legislation. Do you have any idea? Is it going to be per capita, or is it going to be grant-based by program, competitive grants?
At this point, all we're being told is that it will be delivered through the county. So again, you're right on with county collaboration. So the bridge housing is new. The bill passed last year without the housing component in it. So that, what was it, $15 billion? That's a lot of billions. So I think, and that's where our organization would like to partner with the city to work some of these things out. How does the city get in on that? How do we get that money to address these needs? So I haven't looked at it from a municipal standpoint. I've only looked at it from a 10,000-foot level of this money's coming to locals. So that would be something that has to be explored.
Thank you.
Thank you for the -- it was actually a very thorough presentation. I actually had a bunch of questions written down, but you kind of answered some of them for me. One of them was, tell me more about the care court, because I think I'm not always in agreement with everything the governor does, but I think I like the concept of, you know, that we need somebody to engage these people and act on their behalf, because you're right, they're not going to be like, "Hey, I need help." Most of them are not. I mean, I think the chief could probably even say, you know, "We have these people deploying out with us, these social workers, right?" But they're probably interested in hearing, but how many people are really taking these people up on stuff? I see these people every day, and you're right, some of them are just, you can't put them on one basket, but there are some that are very mentally ill, and they're slipping through the cracks, clearly. So how do we solve that? And some of these people are committing crimes in our town, vandalism and things, and it's frustrating, because what can PD do? You know, it's just like, and a lot of things you mentioned are very spot-on about people's frustrations. Some people want to help, other people are just frustrated. Do you know why? It would seem weird that if they rolled this out in a couple of counties, why was not the Capitol city-county not one of those?
Well, it's kind of a volatile. Well, it was kind of a voluntary thing, to tell you the truth, so they wanted some to go first as a model, and I think LA County is one of them, so that's huge, that's like a whole nother state. Sacramento County has been slow to adopt some of the changes, I mean, and I'm not telling tales out of school, I would say this in front of my colleagues at Sacramento County, they were one of the last counties to adopt what we call the organized delivery system, which was what changed care from having to be pregnant or postpartum to all adults. So they were very slow to adopt what most counties did, because the organized delivery system raised the rate that the providers are paid. So it was, yeah, they were a little behind in catching up to this. So I wouldn't expect our county to be the first one in line to adopt Care Courts, but all will have to, so. It really, and it gives us time, actually, I don't think we're ready to jump into Care Courts right now.
Well, I know we have, you know, I know we have a long meeting, so I don't want to belabor this conversation, because this conversation could go on for a long time.
Really?
Just a quick statement I would like to say is, I agree with you that most people are not going to want to create some sort of housing area in town, people are going to be like, you know, "Not in my backyard" kind of thing.
They do not, either.
So I would not want to be supportive of something like that. But I think there's many things there that have some merit, that I'd be interested in finding out. Sadly, like you said, there are some of them are not available to us yet, but I think what's funny is the governor will roll this out, but yet also decriminalize drug use. I just think it's kind of a little bit of hypocrisy there, but what I would like to just throw out there, because I mean, clearly, we, all of us deal with, we always, we, all of us are hearing about homelessness on a regular basis, all the time. I hear about it daily through email, text, somebody tagging me on Facebook about it, business owners, you know, aggravated. What I would suggest is, if maybe staff could come back with, obviously, something like this, the problem is the long-term, right? It's easy to say, "Okay, let's start some money," but the long-term, for us to hire internally someone who could work Care Court cases or any of that kind of stuff, at some point, that's all going to take ongoing funds. So, I'm just throwing this out there, that maybe staff could come back with us in the near future and bring us back some more information, maybe staff could maybe reach out to you and ask some of these questions and collaborate a little bit. But, you know, we have Measure R. It grows every year, and I'm not saying there's a bunch of money left over in there, but I'm saying, but it does grow. And to me, we have a litter abatement position in there, we have other things, we have, you know, we have a gang, and we have things in Measure R that are, that help the community in some way. I look at that, and I think, you know, something like this, a position such as that, or something like this, or whatever, could maybe partially come from something like that, as a small funding mechanism that could get something off the ground. Obviously, I'm very interested in hearing the funding, grants, county money, collaboration, like Mr. Lozano mentioned, all those things are obviously critical, because you threw some big dollar figures up there. But I'm just, I'm just throwing an idea out there where I think there's merit in something like this. I wish this Care Court was available to us now, that we could start using it. Of course, it's not, but this is just some ideas that came to my head just right off the bat. I'd like to think about this some more and, you know, have time to absorb what you've said, but that's just my thoughts right now, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Papano, Vice Mayor Sandu, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I do have one question. And to give you my experience professionally in dealing with it, I have to get these people off the street, whether they're homeless or just deep in addiction, long enough to get them into court, testify, and they go back. That's a big challenge. I have had the opportunity to deal with some who actually, by the time we were ready for court, were clean and had a good life. None of them lived where they were in their addiction. Far northern state, Alaska, Indiana. So I guess my question is, what's the reality that you're going to have these people get clean, and they're going to stay right here where their addiction has been fed, encouraged, for all these years? I just, you know, I see these people go away, get clean, come back a year or two years later, they fall right back into it. So, that's kind of my question, is, I like the approach that housing is last, rather than trying to throw money at it up front, which we've been doing for the last several So the approach is good, I just don't know about the reality of keeping them right here where they've been in that lifestyle, and think that they're going to change out of it.
I'm so thankful for your personal experience in law enforcement, I think you bring a really great vantage point to this, and that strikes an issue of maybe doing some sort of subcommittee on this, where we could have you on a subcommittee to explore this. I don't know, putting it all off on staff to look at, without counsel being involved is a good idea, but, yeah, addiction involves changing who you interact with. I mean, it's part of recovery. You don't need to move from where you are to be in recovery, what you need is a strong recovery community. Do we have that in GALT? I know we have a lot of meetings, I've seen them advertised, most churches have 12-step meetings, but there are other things that support recovery as well, like I talked about, the job mentorships. Okay, so if you get a job here in town, your family's already here in town, because you grew up here, but you're respected and you have a job, that, it's that connection that leads you away from what you just said. What you're talking about is how we do it now. You do the hard work of treatment, and it is hard. I mean, all of us have tried to diet, try and diet for your whole life with a substance that is way better than chocolate and candy. Okay, so it's hard, and then you get out, no one respects you, you don't have a job, you have no place to live, where are you going to go? Exactly like you said, back to the people who supported your use, interacted with you. There's an old saying that recovery isn't abstinence, recovery is connection. So, GALT is still small enough to provide those connections, and I truly believe that given a second chance, the people you're talking about, and we know the difference, I mean, there's a whole range of spectrum of how much a disease has progressed, and I'm not faulting anyone or stigmatizing anyone for where they are on that progression. But that portion that we can build that bridge for, GALT's a great place to do it. And I think it's, I think it's a misnomer to say, "Well, that guy I used to live with is still in town." Well, yeah, you know, they're always going to be people you can use with. You can find somebody new to use with in Alaska, and just because they went to Alaska, you don't know if they didn't find new friends who are using, so. Maybe you just have it in your head that they went away to Alaska and they're still doing great, so.
No, no, those are people that I've brought back from those far places and got to hear their clean life and testify, and then they go back. So, I'm happy, because it's the rare success story, but I appreciate your time, and I, you know, like I say, I appreciate the progression of handling the addiction and handling all that other stuff up front before we think about housing, where people can be on their own.
Our organization has fought Housing First models, and there is evidence to that. So the evidence bears out that if you give somebody a place to live, they're more likely to get into recovery and take care of their mental health and health needs. So there is evidence to that. We support recovery residence living where you are being supported by peers who are all active in recovery. So, I would not suggest a Housing First model here for GALT, it's too small of a town. You'd have neighbors coming unglued if you said, "Hey, all you homeless people from there, come on over here to this house, we're going to pack 12 of you into this neighborhood and this house." They'd run you all out of town, so I would not suggest a Housing First model. I did fail to comment, though, we do have TOT, Measure R, and Mr. Davidson has been wonderful at coming in here and advocating that if the city would actually realize that all of its cannabis tax revenue is going to other places, rather than having a dispensary here, that tax could also be contributed to a homeless abatement and assistance program, so. A little plug for Mr. Davidson's cause. And I want to thank Mr. Farmer for his comments as well, and I think it is possible to do this in a pilot project, so that you're not enshrining a position. So maybe I made it too formal that we're going to have this director of something. Maybe it's a pilot project, and we call it that, so that everyone knows, if they're going to sign on to doing this work, it's limited in term, because, by the nature of calling it a pilot project. So there's a lot of different avenues we can go, I, because I don't know if this will work, because we've never tried it, I agree. Why would we say we're going to have a homeless director for all time and weight down the budget with that, when we could just say we're going to do a pilot project for three years?
Ms. Daly, would it be possible for you to maybe put something together that you could just send staff and the council, something like, this is a bare-bones initial kickoff for such a program, like, we got a Care Court worker, we got some, just, I would like to know, like, the minimal whatever, and some realistic things, like, I think there's probably money right here that could be seed money. It'd be up to us and staff to internally talk about where we think ongoing, I'd been mistaken, said weed abatement earlier, I meant graffiti abatement, comes from Measure R, not weed abatement, I think I said the wrong thing, but anyways, if you could just do that, that'd be very helpful. I would like to see, like, just a bare-bones kickoff number, and then, from my own experience, and then, maybe the council could, you know, engage with the city manager and say, you know, is this something we can maybe look at in the next budget cycle, or we could look at sooner than later? Like I said, I think there's, there could be something, but I want to keep the ball rolling on this homeless conversation, we can't just, we have to do something. And so, that's all I'm saying, is, it's good that we're talking, so, thank you again for coming this evening.
And I'll close with the idea of a subcommittee again, because I feel awful right now, because this is a law enforcement issue as well, and I don't see the chief here, I wouldn't know who the chief is now, so. But Chief Sockman, when I worked on this issue with him a number of years ago, before there were resources to actually do anything in town, he said words that I'll never forget. He said, "If we can't fix homeless in GALT, it's not fixable." So I think we really need to have law enforcement in on, because they're the ones seeing it. Councilmember Papano has experiences as well, but I think it would be, it would be not forward-thinking if we didn't have, I can think of things, but I'm Sherri Daly from CCAP, I see things, I see the elephant from this part. I'm not out at night breaking up fights and cycling people through, because I've arrested them 10 times this month. So, so I think their contribution to what needs to happen, I would not want to be the person that says, "This is what the city should have," because I don't, I'd never liked it as a planning commissioner to watch people come in and say, "I've got this great idea," and then staff is sitting there not rolling their eyes, because they're professional, but inside they're thinking, "Great, you're a genius, like, we didn't think of that." So I don't want to do that to our law enforcement. Anyhow, that, I would just, I like the idea of a subcommittee better, but I will certainly do whatever council would like me to, as far as moving this along.
Vice Mayor Sandu, do you have any questions?
I don't have no question, my colleagues already asked a lot of questions. And the only thing I would like to say, thank you for your detailed presentation, and we all know the homelessness is a global problem, it's not just one city, it's every city, state, county, we have to work together in order to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your time, and I'll follow up with city manager.
I have just one more thing. As Councilman Farmer mentioned, bringing back or getting us some additional information in that, I would say that it would be good to know if there is a private organization that we can partner with, so that we're not creating city positions that maybe for a pilot program don't need to be created, and is there anything in the county that is currently in place? I know there were some delays in getting the social worker that works here in the city hired from the county, so I don't know that that's an option, but I certainly think that as some money is being flown, you know, flows through the county for these services, it might be a good partner in that respect.
And I'll do you one better. Stephanie Welch is the governor's point person on Care Courts, and I've worked with her on this throughout last year, and I'll take, since I'm getting some feedback here that you guys are interested in this, I'll go to her and just say, "How does the money to support this go to the jurisdictions? How can this city leverage those funds to take care of our homeless and see what she says? I'll come back to you and let you know what she says we can do, how that money gets distributed, if we have to go through the county, or can the city just say, 'We want to do this pilot,' and maybe it doesn't even need legislation, maybe it just needs a discussion with Ms. Welch, that we have a great idea, we'd like to try, see if it works, we want you to pay for it."
I would, I'm sorry, I would just say that, you know, I was down at the Capitol, like I said, last week, and Cal Cities is asking for $3 billion of ongoing funding to be put in the budget. Generally speaking, the sense down there was, is we'll be lucky to keep the money we have already in this budget cycle. So, you know, I don't know that the money's going to continue to flow, and that's going to be a big issue for, obviously, for our small town, but that's why I think these partnerships would be helpful.
Okay, let me do some more research, I appreciate the positive input, I know you all care dearly about this subject.
Thank you, I believe the chief has a couple of words, and then I'd like to say a thing or two.
I just wanted to comment that obviously...
It'll kick on.
I'm sure they all love that. Obviously, we support, you know, the further work on this, the department has already done work, and we have some ideas, we work with the city attorney on some concepts. I would say, from the police chief's perspective, I think we would benefit from having an ad-hoc committee of counsel talking about the 360 view of homelessness, this is one slice of the pie, and there, and we want to make sure that we're not duplicating funding streams that should be in place supporting GALT going forward. I get nervous when I see the numbers I saw, so, we're happy to do that, I'm prepared to engage when we have something like that, but I think there's some value in that information exchange, and it's sort of a historical background, and where we are, and the success that Officer Selvi has with three people being placed. So, I mean, things have been occurring, we may not toot our horn enough about that, but I think that helps you from a policy decision perspective about what your priorities are and where you want to spend the dollars.
Yeah, I think the police department's input would be very valuable.
Is that something we could, should we wait till the end of the meeting if one of us wants to suggest maybe a future janitor for ad hoc formation? Okay.
Do you have a history of, do you have a history of success or a history at all in this program?
No.
Okay, that's fair enough.
This is just something that my boss, who is our CEO, Mr. Pete Nielsen, also lives in a town the size up in the foothills, and they struggle with this too, so the two of us, our organization is, actually, we're, I'm going to toot my own horn for a minute, we just won the national award for mental health advocacy for the country, so we're really kind of always pushing the envelope. So, he and I had talked about this, gosh, last year or the year before, about, well, what do you do about rural, and I hate to call this rural, because I know we're not anymore, but what do we do about those homeless people? And really, the, it keeps coming up in committee over and over again, people aren't getting services because they have to go somewhere else to get them, we don't, that's another thing this person could do, is make sure we're bringing businesses to town, but are we bringing therapists to town? Are we saying this is a recovery-friendly place where, you know, if I want to get help for my issues, I got to Kaiser, and I got to Bruceville and have a screening, and three months later, I might get a mental health appointment, good luck. I hear people in town all the time talking about they're young people who have mental health needs that aren't getting met, so I think the city could do an evaluation of how many therapists do we have in town, how far are people having to go to get service, is the county providing enough? We're mandated, the county's mandated to treat our people, are they getting the care they need, are they finding hurdles that they're not meeting? And I'm not poking this county in the eye, because they work harder than anybody I know, but, I mean, an evaluation of whether we're getting, who brought it up, I think, Councilmember Lozano brought it up, that are the county services we're supposed to get getting here? So no, this is new, that's why I call it a pilot project.
No, that's fine, I was, to be honest, I was a bit skeptical, and you won me over to some degree, which is nice. Do you work locally, there's a St. Martin Foundation, they just had a fundraiser, and they're trying to generate a place for housing, do you work or plan to work with groups like that?
We do not as an organization, typically, we stay over in the recovery residence housing, so that's a specific type of group housing that has rules about sobriety, about supporting each other through peer mentoring each other, requirements that you're working your program, whether it be outpatient services, reuniting with your children, getting a job, holding each other accountable, so that's really what we specialize in. I stray into housing sometimes just in zoning fights in Orange County, because lots of NIMBYs down there. But no, I don't really have an expertise in transitional housing or in building housing inventory, that's really not my expertise.
No, I didn't mean building, I just meant, you know, if you talk to, like, hey, St. Martin Foundation, we have this, you're willing to work with any and every basically groups?
We would, yeah, I think that would be great.
Okay, I really appreciate, you know, your approach on treatment, because I agree with you, in my experience with homelessness, that's one of their largest hurdles, they want, if you will, we'll give you a place if you're clean, well, that is one of their largest hurdles is to get there, so I can really appreciate that. And on the Care Courts, you don't really have an intimate knowledge of this, because it hasn't been rolled out correctly, in a general... it hasn't been rolled out correctly in a general sense.
I had a negative opinion of it frankly when it came out because I don't like the idea of taking away people's rights, but I deal with people who have lost their children to opioid overdose and then two years later they can barely speak over a whisper from losing a child to this. So I get that people who care about these people want something urgently done because they don't want to see their loved one die. So there's that balance between, do you conserve a person or not? This is a solution though because you're not conserving someone, you're saying, okay, you got a year, here's what the experts say, this is what your family and your support system says you need, you got a year to do it and we're going to watch and we're going to check in and make sure you're doing these things that lead to a more healthy life and we're going to make sure you have a place to live while you do that hard work. That could work, I'm willing to give it a try. I can't tell you it's going to work, you know, I, I just think it's worth a try, like Chief Sockman said, if we can't do it, it's not, it's not doable. Now we have the tools to do it, I think.
Well, it's, it's not kind to allow your fellow man to slowly kill themselves on the sidewalk in front of your street for your children to watch, that's for sure. And right now it seems the government, previous bad decisions have made victims out of the homeless and the average citizen to the benefit of the government and that's not, it's not the best solution for us, I guess. I know, I know it's about dollars and trying to do certain things right, but thank you so much again for coming and giving us this presentation, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
If there's no other questions, Madam Clerk, would you read the public comment statement?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions, no discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Consistent with the city council procedural guidelines, the mayor reserves the right to shorten the top limit for speakers to ensure the efficient and timely completion of all city business on the agenda. Public comments may also be submitted as noted above via the options listed on the first page of the agenda. We have eight comments.
Okay, thank you.
Misty Springmeyer?
Good afternoon, council, my name's Misty Springmeyer, I'm with Lickety Split Softball. Thank you for allowing me this time to clarify some misinformation, I believe was put out in the community. I was recently made aware of a meeting between the city manager, the Parks and Rec director and various school officials. We know that misinformation was shared during that meeting. My understanding is the city manager and Parks and Recreation Director relayed that our organization was attempting to abolish the joint use agreement between the city and the school districts. I was recently informed that the reasoning for spreading this rumor was a sentence in an email between myself and a Parks and Recreation Commission member where I stated the MOUs are the problem. I'm very curious as to why leaders in our community would take one sentence from an email that was not sent to them and twist it and then relay it to other members of the community. This sentence was in an email that was contained in a long string, string of emails, it was also involved in several conversations with this member of the commission, phone calls, text messages, and again, this was just one sentence in this email. It is connected to a conversation where I question why we have an MOU with a private organization, Galt Youth Baseball and policy, and I ask whether it would be better to have just set policy rather than MOUs with private organizations. I want to talk about in November of 2022, we first started this journey, I came to a council meeting or the board came to a council meeting and we spoke in protest of a proposed MOU between the city and Galt Youth Baseball. December 5th of 2022, I met with the Galt Youth Baseball President, American Made Baseball President and the city manager in an attempt to come to some type of agreement. In this meeting, I advocated for the high school softball team to get more time on the complex fields. I made it very clear that our organization did not want to take time from anyone, especially the, the local schools. January 31st, 2023, I emailed the council and subsequently spoke at a council meeting regarding our failed efforts to obtain practice, practice facilities. I indicated at that time and many times that I also thought it was unfair, the girls' high school softball teams were being pushed off the field. I also advocated that we were hoping to find practice time, but also did not want to take away from any youth in the, in the community. At this time, we only wanted clarification of the MOU and we're hoping for some common sense decisions. After that, we were informed by Director Solis, the only way to get practice time was to abolish the G Y B MOU. February 14th, I met with members from Galt Youth Baseball, American Made Baseball, the city manager, the mayor and Councilmember Lozano. In that meeting, I again advocated for the girls' softball, the high school softball teams to get more field time at the complex. I understand and have openly spoke many times about the importance of all organizations. Rec sports are important, competitive sports are important, high school sports are important. Without each other, we could not all exist. It's good for our girls to have goals, one of those goals is to eventually play in high school. Our organization would never try to harm any of the youth in the community, especially an organization that we're working towards. Beyond softball, I also understand the benefit to the joint use agreement between the city and the school districts. I understand that the city does not have adequate basketball courts. If it wasn't for the school districts, we would not be able to have our basketball programs. I'm sure, I know there are so many other reasons these agreements are important and I would never ask that those agreements be abolished. Last council meeting, I did point out the age of the MOUs that our city operates under and that, that was it, nothing more. My point in that is that it's time to look at how we operate, I pointed out policy, MOUs, I never asked anything was abolished. It's unfortunate and honestly, I feel shameful that a small statement in an email would be twisted and relayed to the public when time and time again, I have made comments about the importance of the high school softball programs and yet that goes in one ear and out the other. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I apologize, Becky Ronzpe?
Good evening, I'm Becky Ronzpe, owner of Ronzpe &amp; Johnson Real Estate, my building is at 628 C Street in Galt. I want to talk about the homeless issue, which is ironic that this was the presentation of tonight. How can we get people to come to Galt with the state of our city? I watch out my window every single day on C Street. If you would spend a whole day on C Street, you would see the magnitude of it because I don't believe you really know it until you live it. I live it every day. Let's work on the cleanup that makes this town less than it is, the homeless on the sidewalk and sleeping in front and around businesses, I watch them out my window and there's new ones every day, every day there's new ones. At night, I watch them on my cameras, go in front of my, go through my yard, they're flipping off my cameras, cameras as they walk by. I have several videos of different ones all over my business, looking around, up and down, going up my driveway, they walk up my front porch around the side. I have a huge window in my front office that faces the street. A couple of months ago, I came to work and there was a huge rock thrown through my window. It was over $11,000 in damage to the inside and outside of my building. I shouldn't have to pay for the people that are wandering our streets. It's usually the businesses that people expect to pay to clean this up, but we are the ones raising money, donating, giving back to the community and trying to make things better for our town. Yet people think it's okay for us to just write the check, to cut the check. We are just a small business, just because we have a business doesn't mean we have money to burn. We are just like you, just trying to make an honest living. Where are they coming from? How can we possibly have new ones? I'm telling you, they're there, I don't care what anybody says, there's new ones. They are not our people, like she said, they are new, I see it every day, we are, what are we doing about it? What is attracting them to our city? Are we getting them from other cities that are shipping them out? It's easy, easy to say, let's help them, when it's not personally or financially affecting you, when you're not dealing with them on a daily basis. We're a freeway city, people come in and go through a drive-through or stop at Walmart, does anything make them want to drive further into our city as they're passing through? How can we get them to drive further into our town? If they get off at C Street and go to Dutch Brothers, what makes them want to drive further? Is it the guy strung out on drugs laying in the middle of the sidewalk? Is it the one that was at the Kevin, the memorial right there in front of the building that I saw the other morning? Is it the broken shopping center sign that greets them? Is it the guys that walk up and down the sidewalk of the Save Mart businesses when you go grocery shopping, you have to watch your back because they're around the corner? These may not, they may not go further if that's what they see as their first impression. The promenade is great, it's beautiful, but they got to get to it through the junk, right? I have to keep my business door locked during the day so that I, so that they don't wander in because they have, they have before. I keep a bear, a bear spray in my office, it's either that or something worse, so the bear spray is in my office to protect myself. It's actually happened. I would love to keep my door open, but I can't and I have to have a doorbell installed so that when people come to the door, we know they're there. I watched a guy, this was just last week, I believe, track two young girls on the street. This was a new guy, he was an African-American gentleman, pants sagging down with a backpack. I watched him out my window, the two girls were walking down the street going towards Sean's direction, the guy was on this side of the street, on my street, he tracked him. I looked out my window, I said, that guy's tracking those girls, I said, I'll be right back. I got in my car, I sped up to where he was at, there was no time to call the cops because I wanted to make sure nothing was happening. As soon as I got between them and my car and I was saying, are you guys paying attention? This guy's following you, they said, we thought he was following us, but their faces were in their phones, they were probably 13 years old. They probably thought I was a weirdo, but I was stressed and so excited because I knew that guy was tracking them. And so he turned around and went the other way, that was a new guy. So let's start with that. I bought my building because of the location, I love Old Town, that's where everything cool happens, that's where I wanted to be. Remember the brick and mortar businesses that make this town what it is? How many businesses are in Old Town? What is attractive to want to keep them here or bring new ones? What is being done for the businesses that will bring in more people for everyone? One thing that we did was a huge fundraiser for Lake Canyon School, we had it at my business. I have a 10,000 square foot parking lot and a area in the back of my business, we did a fundraiser for the school, we raised over $1,000. I had to kick a lady out that was sitting out on the curb in the front of my business that was cussing, talking to I don't know who, and that's what I deal with on a daily basis. So I'm here to give back to my community, to give that place for people to raise money and I'm sick and tired of dealing with the homeless and I can't even run my business, I'm a respectable business, a real estate broker, I shouldn't have to put up with that and I get that, you know, they have to do something, but we got to get them off the streets of the businesses that bring the money into this town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rusty Whitley?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. My name is Rusty Whitley, I own two businesses here in the town of Galt, Galt Commercial Tire and Brake and Whitley's Collision and Auto Body. I was born and raised here, this town is my home. I'm a third of five generations that have resided here, my grandfather was a Galt police officer in the 60s and 70s and my grandmother was the dispatcher. I too am a retired law enforcement officer at the state level. We are being invaded by homeless in Galt. While my colleagues may have compassion for these individuals, I do not because I foot the bill. We do not appreciate their criminal behavior impacting our businesses. I strongly doubt that any one of you have heard that my collision center was robbed last Wednesday, we had $20,000 in catalytic converters stolen off of customers' cars. This happened in broad daylight around 7:00 PM, the men hopped the fence, removed the converters, threw them all to the east side of my building and picked them, and picked them back up through the alley access. We as business owners are fed up. Ronzpe &amp; Johnson Real Estate dealt with the homeless person throwing rocks through their glass windows, Wells Fargo has had their glass broken. My tire shop is located on Glendale and there we had a homeless man start a fire in a customer's car so that he could, and I quote, "stay warm." When the police caught him, they let him go on the same sidewalk that they picked him up on. He could have burned my entire building down, but nothing was done about it. Under the bridge at the golf course is where these homeless communities dwell, they have tents there, many of us seen these people doing drugs in public and I'm constantly asking homeless people to not loiter in front of my business. Today I want to ask the city council, why is this our problem? Why are we, why are our businesses being targeted by criminals? I've been told that there's some kind of surplus of small business money here in Galt and the chamber wants to build a visitor's center. Why do we need that? I would like to ask the city council why they are not pro small business. Here is an example, for businesses such as Galt Smog and Papa's and Wings, the city wanted $100,000 to hook up a simple water and sewer line. At the time, at the same time, the city will allow homeless to sleep, defecate and do drugs wherever they see fit. As beneath the A Street on ramp going northbound, if you do not believe that small businesses are being targeted by Galt, the city of Galt, please hear my personal experience. While I was in negotiations to purchase Larry Kane's Collision Center 10 months ago, I received an abatement letter from the city to remove two outbuildings that had been at the property for three years. This is the interesting part, I had not signed escrow papers, I did not even own this business yet. Let me be clear, this was retaliation for the erecting a storage building on my tire shop with no permit. It was a temporary storage building and I am working to get it permanently placed there. I feel like we've jumped through hoops for the city of Galt and it is still not approved after a year. I invite any of you to meet with me if you have the courage after this meeting or feel free to stop by any one of my shops to discuss our beautiful city is being run haphazardly. Galt is our home and it deserves better. The city is money hungry and has management issues, we simply have the wrong people in the wrong positions here in Galt, California. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
M. Tom Bushnell?
Galt, my name's Tom Bushnell, I'm Rusty Whitley's business partner. We did in fact 10 months ago put in the purchase of Larry Kane's. Often I heard Larry saying the reasons why he wanted out. Some of the things that Rusty said tonight, that's part of it and I'm here to say tonight that I want to be recognized by Galt as one of the merchants that lead people to Galt for good reasons. A lot of people call the shop, they're out of town, they come here because they had a reputation in the past, I like to keep that, I like to keep that. The issue is right now the homeless for us in our merchant, in our town, it is and you've all heard it, you all know about it, you're aware of it. I like some of the things that were said tonight, I don't like some of the things that were said. I think that you should move quicker than slower, I think you should imagine things changing quicker. If you could do that, I think the merchants in town would like to help you collaborate, we can do that, I'd like to do that, that's all I have to say for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Katie Scott?
Good evening, council, my name's Katie Scott, we have met. I'm pleased to announce that I am not here to talk about field usage for the first time in, I don't know, five months or so, because we have rummaged up something that's going to work for ourselves for this spring, but instead I'm here to directly address our city manager and I'm kind of sad that the Parks and Rec Director is not here because he's also part of what I would like to address today as well. I am disgusted with the news that I heard last week that there was a meeting called between the high schools and the city manager. between the high schools and the city manager and Parks and Rec director solely, for the sole purpose to drag our organization's name through the mud and our president's name through the mud by telling them, and I quote, "I'm here for the little guy. If it was up to lickety-split, there would be no rec." How dare you? How dare you? How many times have I stood right here at this podium and said, "We need rec. We need comp and we need rec. We need comp also." Never have I said "instead." There's never been an "instead," and never have any of us ever said anything about taking time away from the high school. We've advocated that because nobody would change the schedules, the high school now has two and a half hours less time a week because nobody would change it. So I don't know what would make that situation happen with either of the high schools and let them know. But I will let you know that they reached out to us, and we did meet with them to clarify this with them, and to let them know that in no way were we trying to take anything away from them. And they were well aware that they were being bold-faced lied to during this meeting. So that kind of made me feel better that they wouldn't believe that we're purposely trying to take anything from them. I mean, I see people that have been in these meetings when we have spoken, and I am sure that they all can tell you that never have we ever said anything that was presented to these high schools. But also I'll challenge everybody here and everybody up here and you, Mr. Hines, to go back and watch every video that we have ever spoken in and every time that we have ever said one word, and please state your case of why anything like that would have been stated to the high schools, because there's no, there's nothing that could help close this case that you've opened up now. I'm disgusted that it was felt that we had to sink so low for a bruised ego because we challenged an MOU that was 20 years old and said, "We need to have new verbiage." I'm sorry if that offended people, that we challenged that and said, "I think something needs to be done because Galt is growing, so maybe it's the same that, the same thing that worked 20 years ago isn't going to work anymore." So I'm sorry that you felt that it was necessary to go do that. And moving forward for the record, we might not ever need a city field ever again because we've scrounged up what we can. We might not ever have to ask for permission to use any city facilities ever again, but we will continue to advocate for the up-and-coming teams that are coming into Galt and the new generation who is going to need a place to play. So we're not going to go away. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Greg Davidson? Yeah. It's gotta be flipped on. Flip the button. Are there black lines?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council. I wish I could show as much passion as our prior speakers, but I don't think that I can match any of them. I'd like to talk about the nuts and bolts of the city, something completely different. First, I'd like to thank the city. The city's tree service that they have contracted with has done a beautiful job at the places that I've seen them so far. It really transforms these small parks, the latest one being Harvey Memorial Park. It's amazing how much it, it opens up the park, and it must be a much more welcoming field for the kids and the adults as well. Secondly, I'd like to recognize Chief Beck there and his force. I've noticed them doing a lot of traffic enforcement lately, where they'll sit and watch the four-way stop around town, and it's very much appreciated. And I hope that you get the, the people who are not stopping at the crosswalks, not, not stopping at the stop signs. Third is a situation I was first made aware of on March 27th, when my wife and I were downtown on the east side of North Lincoln Way. I nearly fell in my wheelchair into a four-inch-deep hole in front of Roma. I brought this to the, the trees had been removed, and I brought this matter to the attention of the council as well as Public Works. I went back a few weeks later, and nothing had been changed, brought it to the attention of council again, and, I'm sorry, a few days later, and nothing had been changed. Brought it to the attention of council again and was told that the holes, which are called "tree ports," had been filled in with decomposed granite. So I went down to check it, and only one of them had been filled with decomposed granite. Three of them still had a four-inch drop-off. While I was there taking pictures to send, again, through the Galt Connect, a lady actually stepped into one of those holes and twisted her ankle. My very first boss, when I was 15 years old, taught me a very valuable lesson. I'd like to pass it along to our Public Works Department. Maybe they could work it into their training manuals. It goes like this. If you dig a hole, fill it in or mark it. That thing is a huge liability to any person walking by that would step into a hole. These had no A frames on them, they had no yellow tape around them, they had no orange cones. They were just holes in the ground. Like I say, huge source of liability for the, for the city. I noticed that the trees have been replanted, but the tree grates have not been put back in place. So that's a place, another place where somebody could step in, or a stroller or a wheelchair could fall into. Finally, I know Mr., oh, Mr. Solis is here. Perhaps he can give an update at the end of the presentation this evening. I spoke to him after our last city market and told him of the difficulty in finding handicap parking. At that market, I'm just one person. I spent over $100 at approximately six different stalls. I had to park illegally, facing the wrong way so I could get the ramp out on my van. I called Galt PD, let them know that my vehicle was going to be parked like that, and put the placard up, even though I was not in a handicap space. I refused to take a space in front of an open business such as a Velvet Grill during the city market. When I spoke to Mr. Solis, he initially dismissed the idea out of hand. When I explained to him that I'd been to different concert venues or the events out at McFarland Ranch where they added handicap parking, he said that he would speak to the city's attorney's staff, and I'd like to get an update at the end of the evening. See, we're less than two weeks away from our next city market. I anticipate another three-day break in winter for the market before we go back to more rain and wind. So we'd like to get as many people as we can there, and I know we're just a small member, a small segment of the population, but we are a significant member, members of the population, and we want to get all of the income that may come from any person, be they disabled or able-bodied. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, sir.
Kenley?
Good evening, council. A lot of the stuff here, I was going to direct it to the Parks and Recs, and the newspaper, they said they had a meeting last week, but there was nobody in this building. So I was bringing up that, you know, the Galt Flea Market, it's time for a name change, to Galt Marketplace. If you compare it to other flea markets in other towns, they look like little villages in Tijuana. I mean, the tents are left there all day and everything. I always wondered if they could use the market grounds for more festivals, events, car shows, and concerts. The problem with the flea market, 50 to 75 vendors, they park in the customer lot. That's equal to 200 to 350 lost spaces that could be used during the day from turnover. One time, about three weeks ago, they used the P A system to notify the vendors to park in their, in their spaces or the designated vendor lot that's across the street. They should give out flyers, "No parking for vendors." Then I wanted to bring up the Fourth Street, Fourth Street and D, there's a little finger there that comes out of the driveway of the parking lot. It's about 20 to 30 feet. Basically, a little dog park would be fine there if it's just add a park bench and a little fence, because, you know, there's 100 people in the Galt Place, and a lot of them have dogs, two or three dogs, and they have no place to run them. They need a park bench on East, on E and Fourth Street, because when we walk it, there's no park bench to step on F, and then the next one is at C Street. It would be beneficial for the 100 seniors living at Galt Place. On the Fourth Street promenade, when they have the events, there's no fire extinguisher available, available in plain sight or a first aid station. They tell me that the police cars have the, the police cars have the fire extinguisher, but they're not always accessible if somebody's not in the car, and the police are away. And the Galt, the search team isn't always there, so it's nice to have availability of the equipment. The only place that I found that I can get a fire extinguisher from was the Coffee Shop Bakery. You never know when an accident might happen. And I wanted to bring up that we need a fixed route bus system for the seniors to get around. Many Hispanic seniors rely on their kids to drive them places. This way they can offer a monthly or day pass to go shopping more frequently, and, because they have dial-a-ride, but it costs $1.75 each trip, and you have to book an appointment all the time, one or two days in advance. And usually it's not in your timeframe that they give you the chance to ride the bus. And then when you want to come back from where you were dropped off, you have to wait for an hour to get a return trip. And it's hard to book a ride during 7:00 to 9:00 and 2:00 to 4:00 because the schoolkids are riding the bus. That was it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Travis Castle?
All right. Thanks for having me, and sorry it's been such a long meeting for you. I'll try to keep it short and sweet. So my name is Travis, and I have an idea that I've been working on for a few months now. Basically, we have parks that are kind of degenerating, and we have homeless people, and we've talked about that extensively tonight, so I'll limit that. So I wanted to kind of give the community opportunity, as far as the businesses, to be able to advertise in a productive and clean way on to the parks and kind of integrate it into the playground equipment. So this is one of the parks, Walker Park. As you see, there's some damage there with the, this is the playground itself, and then the bathrooms are kind of having issues. So if you go to the next page, I have simple, and sorry for my PowerPoint skills aren't the best, but have a simple integrations that we can have, like on the bathrooms doors, we can have something on the bathroom doors that are donated by a company so we can keep the bathrooms clean and maintained, and same thing with the parks, signs that are already there, have a little hanger below it. If you go to the next page, yours is a lot better than my copy, but, so on the cement, we can also have murals of civil rights leaders or historical figures and presidents, and have a kind of educational segment of it, and underneath it have information about them, like Ronald Reagan's the 40th president, and, you know, some, some fun facts about them, and then donated by, you know, whatever company. So these integrations can be in the next page, can be also into the playground equipment itself with donating new equipment and existing stuff. And the final, the next page has park benches and park tables. So we kind of, basically I'm trying to give multiple options, and the final page is Make It Grove Park. I'm sorry. McKinley Park, I apologize. So they kind of did something similar to this, but it's more permanent with the bricks and the, the small plaques for a park bench. So we kind of got the complicated issues coming our way. The state of California is roughly $32 billion in a deficit this year estimated. If we know anything about the real life of it, it's closer to 40. So my concern is I want to maintain the parks, I want to keep them safe. Park equipment's extremely expensive, and unfortunately it's not even easy to repair anymore, because many of the older structures can, cannot even be repaired, so we have to start a new one. So my integrations that I have set up, I, sorry, they're very flexible, so if you want to do fields and whatever else, whichever, however the signage you want, as far as, as bright or subtle as you want, I'm willing to volunteer for any subcommittee or anything to discuss this further, and, sorry. Basically, the concern is I want to provide funding for this, that we can self-fund so we're not dependent on outside agencies. City Sacramento, for instance, gets $15 million a year for homelessness, and with the budget shortfall, it's probably going to be cut down, so we're going to have an influx of more homeless people, and that's not what anybody wants to hear. So I think a system like this, however you would like to do it, could be valuable because we can improve the parks, improve the quality of them, and also have funding for homeless services so we can kind of keep them out of the parks so we don't end up like McKinley Park where they have tons of homeless there causing a lot of issues. Some of our parks in Galt, we do have that issue with homeless people ripping apart garbage cans and, and setting them on fire for heating and all that. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. I think you would be interested in the item coming up, L3. That's it? Thank you. Okay. With that, we move on to I, reports by city council members on regional boards, commissions, and/or committees. Vice Mayor Sandu?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Transportation Authority meeting was canceled a week before, so nothing to report. I will report for the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Popinow?
I don't have anything to report.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Farmer?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Lozano?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. One is on the item, it's the, on the agenda, I'm sorry. The Cal Cities Leader Summit that I attended last week, very interesting. We were able to meet with Senator Flora, I mean, I'm sorry, Assemblymember Flora and Senator Nilo about local issues and city issues, and one of the, one of the pitches was to provide, for the state to provide through the budget, regular $3 billion a year for cities who, the Cal Cities group did a survey, and about 85% of local cities already have money going toward the homeless issue, and so that was one of the requests from the Assemblymember and the Senator. There were elected people from all over the state meeting with their representatives. There were a couple of issues, and this is all on the Cal Cities website, so if you're interested, you can look up in the advocacy but, area, but they, we also talked about homeless legislation, and Senator Eggman has a couple of behavioral health and facilities bills that are being pitched now, and Cal Cities as a group is supporting them. How to respond to homelessness in, in light of the state spending billions of dollars already on housing. I believe that the state is seeing that we may have to put some, some, some money elsewhere, and it's not necessarily housing first, it's not working. And then a couple of public safety issues, some assembly bills where theft... Um, and then, um, a couple of public safety issues, um, some assembly bills where theft, um, AB seventeen oh eight, it's a theft bill where the measure would amend, uh, Proposition forty-seven to increase the accountability for repeat offenders. So there used to be a law that if you, um, were convicted of a theft crime and you did time for it, that, um, on any petty theft arrest after that, you would, uh, it was a felony, instead of having to meet a dollar threshold. Well, Prop forty-seven eliminated that, and so this is a bill that would reinstate that to, to some degree, and, um, and then the other had to do with, um, enhancements for opioid, um, dealers, where somebody was, uh, seriously injured or, uh, die from an opioid sale, uh, they would have a three-to-five-year enhancement on whatever crime they were charged with. Um, and what we heard down there was that the legislature is not real interested in, um, hearing any fentanyl or opioid legislation, uh, as individuals. They want to, uh, wait on it and hear them all at one time at a later date. So apparently, their urgency is not the same as ours, and it's crazy. Um, then there were some just general session items, but I, I will say this, what I got out of it was an opportunity, um, to, uh, meet both, with both of our legislators and, and our local people as well. There were, there were people from Ileton and all over the region here, and, um, I did get to mention, uh, to both of the legislators about, uh, Dry Creek, and how, um, it's not just an issue, uh, a homeless issue, it's not just a trash issue, it's also a vegetation issue, and, um, you know, there are many partners in that area that have jurisdiction, and so they were both, uh, willing to, um, to meet and get the people in the room that can make decisions on that area to help, uh, begin to clean it up. And I also had a really good conversation with our supervisor, uh, Pat Hume, yeah, about the same issue, and, and, uh, he is on board with whatever we can do. So what I plan on doing, uh, unless otherwise, uh, asked by my council members, is next week, uh, send out an email to those different jurisdictions to see if we can get everybody in the room to talk about, uh, what we can do there. And maybe it's, uh, first a meeting and then a private public workshop or something, um, because one of the, one of the issues that we have is we have two different counties, uh, a fire jurisdiction that's a separate agency from the city, and certainly from, uh, the other agencies. Um, we have, you know, uh, wildlife and fish and game have jurisdiction in there, and so, uh, the idea, uh, and I've talked to the city manager about this at, uh, a few months back, but to really bring those folks together to say, what can we do, and what part can you play in this? Now, I will say that the county, or I'm sorry, the, the, the fire department, um, has done a couple of things, and, and in terms of the homelessness and trying to reduce fire down there, but I think if we do a collaborative approach, where everybody that can make a decision is in the room, whether it be a chief of staff or, or somebody from the legislature, um, can help, we, uh, I think we'll be better off. And so, um, I'm going to leave that, with that, um, I, I do want to just say that I have a SACOG board meeting on Thursday in Roseville, and, uh, we'll be looking at, uh, Roseville and what they're doing, uh, in terms of housing, and, uh, kind of, we have an item on our agenda tonight about their, the, um, housing element, and some of the things that Roseville's doing, uh, so I hope to report back on that. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. That was a, a good report. It's a little encouraging to see that the attitudes are charting to change about being, uh, I guess, I'll be kind and say proactive about the homeless situation, as we evidence here. Uh, I was, uh, able to listen in to a groundwater authority meeting, um, it was reported, if I remember correctly, roughly, that, well, I won't say a number, because it varies well to well, but our water table has risen, I would say that cautiously, cause I, I believe it could be easily just passed through as things settle out, but that's good news, and, uh, they just generally talked about budget and, uh, well permitting. Now, regional boards like the Groundwater Authority, if you want to repair your well or replace it or install one, it must go through extra steps, and some of those things may be, uh, added telemetry or, um, things of that nature, which could be good. Um, with that, we'll move on to, uh, the information consent calendar. Is there any public comment on the information consent calendar?
No public comment.
Okay. It is recommended that items one through five be acted on simultaneously unless separate discussion and/or action is requested by the council members. Um, is there any separate action? Seeing none, uh, I will be looking for a motion to, uh, receive the file warrants, period ending in April fifth, twenty twenty-three, minutes of the regular meeting for April fourth, twenty twenty-three. Nope, wrong side. Uh, three, uh, Live Oak Sump Pump Station Magnesium Hydroxide Facility, CIP five twenty-one B, Construction Contract Award, Seco Exempt, Section, uh, fifteen sixteen four, Award Construction Management and Inspection Services Agreement, Awards and Amendment Number Two, Design Service Agreement, Seco Exempt, Section fifteen thirty, fifteen three oh one C and fifteen one sixty-four, Designation of an Authorized Official to Execute Land and Water Conservation Grant Document, Seco Exempt, fifteen three oh one C. Do I have a motion?
Prove.
Moved by Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilman Farmer. Uh, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Aye, thank you. Motion passes five zero. Next is, uh, scheduled matters of notice of public hearing, so, um, subject to twenty twenty-one, twenty through twenty twenty-nine, housing element site eighteen, report agenda by Mr. Hoffman.
Um, Craig?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I would like to make a statement, uh, on that, uh, site eighteen, uh, adjacent to do, I have a real estate or property, uh, close to that, uh, that site. This may be, well, conflict of interest, or it may be not conflict of interest, but due to an abundance of cautions, uh, I will be recusing myself from this agenda item. When the agenda item will come, somebody call me, I will be out.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Hoffman.
Good evening, councilmembers, and tonight's item is very much so a procedural item. The city previously adopted its housing element, and within that housing element, we identified an additional site that had to go through a general plan amendment and a rezone. So tonight, we're looking, uh, receive the presentation, open the public hearing, any, uh, comments that, uh, the public might have, and then taking the, the following four items, approving the environmental document, a general plan amendment, introducing a rezone of the property, and then, uh, modifying, uh, uh, the municipal code to add an R four A zoning designation. So again, this site was part of our housing element, it was the only site that was identified as needing some type of modification in order for us to meet our housing needs. We do need to rezone and general plan amendment this site. We needed additional, um, housing units for what would be, uh, multifamily property. We went through a very exhaustive process when the city adopted its housing element, public workshops, public meetings, before the planning commission, before the city council. We wanted to make sure it was a very transparent, very open process, and we enjoyed it so much that we did it again, because HCD said, well, although you did a great job, it wasn't great enough. So then we redid it in, uh, twenty, uh, twenty-two. But again, through this entire process, the council has said, make this process very transparent, very open, and we've tried to do that, even with what we have right now. We held a workshop and a public hearing before the planning commission, we didn't receive any comments, and I think a lot of that was driven by the fact, when we went through this process to identify an additional site, we put this site out where you didn't have a lot going on, we weren't, um, disrupting existing neighborhoods. This was a, a gap area, we didn't have a, a lot of new development around, it really made sense. Site eighteen is the brown star, and it does fit in the overall development pattern of the city. It makes sense where it's located. It's an area that we currently don't have multifamily housing. So what we're currently doing is we're taking a site that, uh, is highway commercial, it's a forty-five acre site, by taking nine point nine acres and making them, uh, multifamily, it doesn't take away from the opportunity that the city's looking for in the future, and again, it's not surrounded by existing neighborhoods. So it's going to be a general plan amendment, going from commercial to high-density residential. Uh, zoning is creating an R four A high-density designation. This is new for the city. The state required that, although we do have R four designations that allow a density anywhere from fourteen to twenty-four units per acre, the new standard R four A is twenty to thirty units per acre. I can tell you, building an apartment at twenty units per acre is really, really tough, and I would think that the majority of the projects that we see will come in at, right in at twenty units per acre, but I have a hard time believing they'll get that type of density hitting to, close towards thirty. Oh, that's it. Again, a very, very much so a procedural item tonight. Again, we haven't had any comments before the planning commission, and I don't know if we're going to have any tonight. We haven't had any comments from the public on this item.
Thank you, sir. With that, I officially open the public hearing, and, uh, is there any comments by staff?
Yeah, or council.
Yeah, sorry.
Well, we just got to have some comments, Craig, got to have some questions. No, I just want to, um, I just want to just reiterate a little bit for people that are watching at home or in the room that, and correct me if I'm wrong in any of this, but we were just told that we needed to designate another site for high density, we didn't have enough, and so you guys did your diligence and just found that this was the one that made the most sense, because it's not going up against existing neighborhoods, it's an undeveloped area as a whole. Am I on the right track here?
Yeah, and I think that's why you're seeing that we don't have any public comments. It's an area that made sense, we needed this area, and you're not necessarily doing this because you want to.
That's what I want to reiterate, a lot of people think that, uh, you know, um, our hand is forced on many of these things with housing, and we have to just oblige, it's just state mandates and stuff, so, uh, I think it makes sense. Uh, just a quick question, I mean, do you, obviously goes without saying, but we feel like there's plenty of sufficient commercial highway there to, 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 uh, entice, uh, development there with that nine point nine acres being carved out, right?
Absolutely, and this was a big discussion pri- previously with this council, and well, as well with the planning commission. We went around with this going, we can't do something that takes away opportunities from the future.
What I also like about it is that it's, it's up against how we commerc- so, you know, what I'm picturing here is like, where you see like a Target with like the sound wall kind of behind Target, then you see like an apartment complex kind of behind that, like, I'm thinking like Lodi or something. That's kind of what I'm envisioning with, with the three borders here, and then it's up against the R three, which is just a slightly lower density, so you're not going from like a regular neighborhood to apartment complex, like, you're not having such a rapid transition, right? Except that corner, right? The corner, R one C, that's, that's traditional, so you're just touching it slightly at the corner.
And up along that border between the R one C, the R three PD, and where this site would be, you have the extension of Crystal Way going up, so you actually have a road separating those two.
Yeah.
With landscaping and dual, uh, masonry walls on both sides, so it does make a lot of sense.
All right, well, that's all I had, I just wanted to pull those facts out. Thank you, Craig.
Mr. Papinow?
I'm good.
Mr. Lozano? I, I just have one question out of curiosity, as I was listening to this, um, if this were to get used up, would we be required to have another site similar to this in, uh, or is it set by years?
We're set for, with this rezoning, we're set for the twenty-one to twenty-nine, um, housing element. We don't have to, uh, do any more rezoning or general plan amendments during this cycle.
Thank you. Uh, Madam Clerk, is there any public comment on this item?
No public comment.
Thank you. With that, I, I close the public hearing, and, uh, adopt, we would like, look to, oh, wait, adopt the resolution approving the initial study mitigation negative declaration and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program of the two thousand one through two thousand twenty-nine housing element site eighteen project. Adopt the resolution approving the general plan amendment for nine point nine acres from C to HDR. Introduce, introduce the ordinance approving the proposed rec- rezoning of the nine point nine acres from HC to R four A and six. Introduce and waive, introduce and waive the first reading, uh, by title only of the ordinance attending, amending Section eighteen dot sixteen dot O two O and eighteen dot sixteen dot O four O of the Galt Municipal Code regarding high-density multifamily residential dwelling. Do I have?
So moved.
Moved by, uh, Councilman Farmer.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Lozano. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu? Oh, I'm sorry, he, Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Aye. Motion passes four to absent. Um, before we move on to the next item, I'm going to call a five-minute recess, so I can use the bathroom. Okay, looks like everybody's ready, we'll continue. So the next, uh, is L, Regular Calendar. First is the Treasury's Office, subject, subject, City of Galt Investment Policy for Fiscal Year twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-four.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, councilmembers, before you, you have the, uh, fiscal investment policy for the, for the next fiscal year, twenty-three, twenty-four, and I, this has to be presented in a, in a public meeting, um, for, for discussion. I just want to, uh, remind everyone that, um, uh, this is kind of like a roadmap, as far as how the city invests, uh, their funds, and, uh, with the objective of safety first, liquidity second, and then, of course, yield or interest third, okay? Those are the priorities. And the, um, this also is, is a document that, that I want to remind you, as a council, you have the authority to invest the city's funds. Now, with this document, you also have the authority to delegate that investment, those investment responsibilities and duties to the city treasurer, and that's the part that has to be presented before, uh, in a public meeting, and that's, uh, that's by California Government Code, Section fifty-three six oh seven, so that has to be done. Um, the question I know that you're going to ask me is, what difference, what changes have I made in this policy as opposed to the one that we currently have? And the answer is, I changed the years. Twenty twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four. Literally, that is it, okay? We still have the same brokers that I work with. Hello? Um, we still have the same brokers I work with, we still have the same, uh, safekeeper, um, for, for our, um, custodian that I, that we have. So the two brokers I work with, one's in Mill Valley, one's in La Jolla, and, uh, the safekeeping facility is in Seattle, Washington, with Zion's Bank. Okay? So with that, I'll ask that you approve the investment policy for the next fiscal year, twenty-two, twenty-four, um, twenty, sorry, twenty, twenty-three to twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment on this item?
No public comment.
Okay, uh, if there's no public comment, uh, is there any comment or questions by city council? Seeing none, I ask for a motion to, uh, to accept by motion, the City of Galt Investment Policy as submitted. I, so moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by the Mayor. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Next, uh, is Treasurer's Report for period ending March twenty twenty-third. Mr. Farrell?
Yes, thank you very much, and before I get to that, I'll just give you some, some local, um, uh, I guess, financial information, which, uh, you've, you've now become accustomed to. Um, so first, let me, let me talk to, uh, let me first, let me, let me talk to, let me address, in February of 2023, so it was just two months ago, there were 17 homes that were sold in Galt. The median price, which is the one in the middle, right, it was $450,000. Okay? Now, the, in March, just literally last month, 18 homes sold, and the median price was $521,000. The different, the reason is because there were much smaller homes that were sold in February than in March. Okay? And I, I mean, I have all those stats. If you really want to get into it, I can provide it. But the bottom line is the, the average home sold in, in February was only like, let's see, 1,352 square feet. That, and then in March, they were larger. In, in March, they were 1,817 square feet. So that's the reason why. Okay. Having said that, the EDD, I want to give you the unemployment rate in Galt. So according to EDD, and I don't necessarily believe these numbers, but it's posted on their website, so I have to provide that. There's 12,000 employable individuals here in, here in the City of Galt. Of that, 11,200 are employed, which results in an unemployment rate of 6.6%. Now, again, believe it or not, the county of Sacramento, they're saying is, has an unemployment rate of 4.5%. I personally think, my opinion, is that we're closer to the county mark of 4.5% and not the 6.6%. Okay? So having said that, I'll now get into the actual Treasurer's Report for March of 2023. And I want to address the, I guess, the, the safety issue as far as how safe our city's funds are, just because as we all have read in the newspaper, there have been, since I was here last, there were, I want to say, three bank failures, most, most predominantly the Silicon Valley Bank. So the majority of our funds, which is 80% of our funds, is in government agencies. And what I mean by that are like the Federal Home Loan Bank or Federal Home Loan Mortgage Corporation. Or, and we have a couple of simply U.S. Treasury bills. So that's, that's what I say. 80% of our funds are in that. Okay? And then we have about 10% in what I call insured cash sweeps. Okay? Now, what that is, is I go to two different banks. One being our local bank here at Farmers Merchants, and the other one is our third-party custodian, which is Zion's Bank. And I want to say, provide them with money. What they do is they turn that money around and go through a network called Intrify. Okay? And what Intrify does is they take those funds and then place them in banks throughout the entire nation in increments of $250,000 or less. Okay? So that way, all of those funds are then insured back by FDIC insurance. Okay? The other, next is our money that we have simply at our local bank, Farmers and Merchants Bank. As you know, we've been with Farmers and Merchants Bank for, gosh, ever since the City of Galt has been incorporated. So with what they do, or in any bank, not just Farmers and Merchants, anytime a bank receives money from a government entity, they have to collateralize it. Now, what collateralization means is for every, let's say, $100,000 we put in that bank, they have to set aside $110,000 worth of securities. And those securities have to be held at a third-party provider or custodian to make sure that if that bank goes under, then, then that third-party custodian then still provides those securities back to this, to the government entity. So those three things that I just mentioned, as far as the government agencies, as far as the insured cash sweep, and as far as the, our local bank with the collateralization, that's where we have our money. And that's, I have no qualms as far as the safety of our money. It's, I sleep at night. Let me just say that. And I, and just to let you know, I honestly, I think you should too, based upon your, your money is safe. Okay? With that, I'll wrap this up real quick and tell you that for the first three months of the fiscal year, the city has made approximately a million dollars in interest. It's actually 992,000. And we have one, one quarter left to go. And that number will probably be, come in at about 1.25, 1.3 million all total. Now, that of course gets distributed among 52 different accounts, depending upon how much money each account has put into the city collectively. So it all does not go like, say, into the general fund, or all does not go into the police or wastewater or anything like that. Okay? So with that, I'll answer any questions that you have. Otherwise, I'll ask for your approval for the Treasurer's Report for Ending March of 2023.
Thank you, sir. Is there any questions by the city council? Seeing none, I would, is there any public comment on this item?
No public comment.
Thank you. I need a motion to accept the Treasurer's Report as submitted. Moved by Councilman Lozano, seconded by Councilman Farmer. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Next is, you're very welcome. Thank you, sir. And by the way, my sleeping style can best be described as cement. Next is City Manager's Office. Subject is Discussion Proposed Measure Q Expenditure Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to present this proposal tonight to help council begin the conversation about the utilization of the Measure Q dollars. So what we're going to present tonight is an overview of the staffing required for what Director Solis and I call the no-excuse budget. And this budget and staffing would provide for weekly mowings, weekly trimmings, prunings twice a year. Of all of the city's parks, again, 21 parks, trails, and medians. So if you sort of look at things in a global perspective, yes, 21 parks, but you can imagine all of the center miles that we have in the city, and those are sort of the roadways, there are medians along most of those roadways. So we're talking miles and miles of medians. And then we're talking the city's trails. So you're going to see some augmentation of staff. You're going to see augmentation of budget. You're also going to see in this presentation perhaps a utilization, a couple of ideas for the utilization of the ARPA funds, and some ideas for perhaps some other projects that we could tackle, tackle with strategic use of these Measure Q funds. Did I say ARPA? I thought I slipped up and said ARPA. So, sorry. Yeah. Sorry about that to the folks watching and to the council and to the folks in the audience. I've just, it's been six, eight months with ARPA, I'm sorry, two years with ARPA. So it's hard to shake that. But we're going to talk about Measure Q tonight. So I'm going to turn this over to Director Solis, who will talk to you all about the increase in staffing. There are currently, I believe, 17 current positions in parks. The proposal is to add roughly 17 more positions. But again, Director Solis will get into that. He will also discuss on the next slide, the individual expenditure plans, and these are the sort of the totals necessary to support those additional staff. So Director Solis, I will turn it to you. And there are details in the staff report in the, in the agenda packet as well.
Good evening, city council. Please excuse my absence earlier today. I'm not feeling well today. I was trying to keep away from everybody I was in the room. And soon as this is over, I'm going to be leaving. I'm going to try and get through this, okay? So please excuse my absence from earlier. So in our current org chart, or the proposed org chart, everything you see in gray is what we currently have on staff. We have seven full-time and 10 part-time staff. What we're proposing to add are seven full-time positions and seven part-time positions. Those range for backfilling the park supervisor position, adding an office assistant, bringing in janitorial for our Parks and Rec buildings, our Littleton Center, our Shabola Center, to do that all in-house now. We would bring in a facility maintenance person full-time and one part-time. Currently, we have 50%, or close to 50% of the service request orders into Public Works. And unfortunately, that 50% doesn't equal priority. So by bringing this in-house, they would service our buildings, our parks, everything that we need them to do that we're, we get put on a waiting list for currently at Public Works. And then to the left column, you'll see the new landscaping personnel added, in which we would bring our mowings down from two, two a month to four a month. Would like to go on to the next slide. What you see here is the breakdown for the personnel, our capital equipment. And that capital equipment will, will be things like trucks, mowers, weed eaters, blowers, trailers for the new landscaping section that we're doing. We'll be adding a, a parks crew and then adding the landscaping crew. We'll be dividing them up that way to mow on a weekly basis. So everything would get mowed on a weekly basis. We don't have enough vehicles currently or equipment to do that now, just to split it In our maintenance and operation budget, where you see the, in the staff report, you'll see the professional services. That's the large item in there. And the line share of that $100,000 is going to be for tree care. We set aside about $60,000 for that number. If you, if you've seen any of our bills, it's quite expensive to maintain trees. And then we really saw that when the storms came in January and February. We recently did A Street, and it cost us, just from Emerald to Sparrow, it cost us, I believe it was 20, $28,000 just to do that section of trees. So we're asking for at least 60. I know we've done a lot of the work over the last two years, but we want to finish it up. Want to go to the next one, Lorenzo? And I think that's, covers everything you need me to cover.
Yes, sir. So as you can see, and for those folks who have the agenda packet, there are more details regarding the positions, the actual line item breakdown for operations and maintenance, the line item breakdown for the capital equipment, and also a breakdown of each position or positions, and their costing, and how we arrived at those numbers. So the total request right now is 1.718 million, or 1.719 million. Currently, the general fund provides support for Fund Six, which is the Parks and Recreation Fund, Fund 32, 33, and 37, which are our landscaping and lighting funds. And counsel, you correct me if I'm wrong, when the resolution was passed last August, it was the intention of the council that these dollars be redirected for parks, trails, and medians, and other programs as funding became available. But the priority was the beautification of our town. And so I bring this option to you, and this is, again, just an option. But with our parks request and the current subsidy for the general fund, from the general fund of about 2.138 million. So the general fund is actually budgeted to pump 1.5 into Fund Six, 438,000 into Fund 32, 131,000 into Fund 33, and 57,000 into Fund 37. Those are needed to balance the funds as we put together the budget. Those aren't the actuals. These are needed as, when we put our budget, budget plan together. If you take the total parks request, take the total current general fund support for parks and the LLDs, you get 3.857 million. We're estimating that the Measure Q revenues will be about $4 million annually. So if there's a desire to stop right here and fund the additional parks maintenance staffing and fund the general fund subsidy, thereby essentially increasing the general fund by 2.138 million dollars every year, because the new dollars, the new Measure Q dollars will take over that responsibility. So I call this sort of the full funding option, but it's a kind of a, it's almost a status quo option once we get those dollars in. So essentially, that $4 million covers everything. And we can just stop right now, and it will cover everything. And you will actually have roughly about 100 and, you know, $100,000 or $140,000 left over every year. The other option I wanted to put in front of the council is an option for perhaps some debt service or leveraging opportunities for a portion of the 4 million. If I'm moving too fast, let me know.
No, no, you're good.
Because I'm, I'm an accountant at heart, so if I start rolling here, you gotta, gotta pull me back. So the total parks request from the last slide is 1.718 million. What I'm proposing in this option is that we take that one-time capital expenditure of 341,000, that we fund that with the general fund. It is, I'll call it quasi-one-time in nature, because you're not going to buy a mower or truck every year. But we can get rid of those, we can get rid of that cost with our undesignated fund balance, and it will make just a small, a very small dent in our undesignated fund balance. So that leaves us with a total need for the parks requests. It's down to 1.4 million. I would also propose that we take care of the, that the, we use the Measure Q dollars to address the subsidy for Fund Six. So we have the parks requests minus the capital expenditures. That's, the general fund's going to take care of that. And then we've got the general fund subsidy for Parks and Recreation Fund Six. So the total need for Measure Q on an ongoing basis right now is 2.9 million. We're expecting 4 million. That leaves you about $1 million, which is available for debt service. Now, on the line, I have our bond counselor or our bond advisor, Albert Pecce, and our bond attorneys, David Fama. And in case you have any questions about the slides that are to come, in the event that council decides to take some of the 4 million that we're expected to receive annually. And Tina, can you hit that space bar, please? Thank you. If council decides to, I, as I say, set a million dollars aside for debt service, that will allow us to go out and get bonds. And the city has done bonds before. This is how we built the police station. And so these are sort of, we've got three columns here. And I guess the column to the far left is probably the most relevant column in that if we have a million dollars a year in debt service, we could go out and get bonds for almost $14 million for 20 years, $15 and 1/2 million for 25 years, and 30, almost 17 million payable over 30 years. The rates, the all-in rates that we have there are pretty low. They actually beat some of the residential mortgage rates, and we'll see that in the next slide. The column in the, in the middle, in the column to the right, shows you what happens if those market rates if those market rates go up, or those interest rates go up by 50 basis points, or go down by 50 basis points. And just to kind of see what the impact is on the net proceeds. Albert, David, are you on the line? And let's see if, if you have any further comments on this slide or the slide that's coming up next.
Good evening, Lorenzo. It's David Fama.
Albert. David.
Myself and my partner are bond counsel, and we can answer your questions as to structuring. I think Mr. Pache would address it.
Hang, hang, hang on, Albert. We're trying to get you plugged in here.
David, can you unmute yourself? It shows you're muted.
You've got me unmuted now.
Okay. Let's just keep moving. So mayor and council members, this is, again, an opportunity to leverage about a million dollars a year and get these dollars. This is a grid that our bond advisor and our bond attorneys have provided to just kind of show the, the impact of the 30-year fixed rate mortgage, which is in red, the bank prime, the bank prime loan rate, which is in blue, and also in comparison to the 30-year lease all-in interest payment, which is in red. So as you can see, at least from this perspective, it is competitive amongst those other vehicles. So if we're able to leverage dollars to come away with anywhere between 14 and 17 million dollars, there are a number of items that we can address here in the city very quickly. Finishing the three softball fields in Walker, softball slash baseball fields in Walker Park, total cost is 5.2 million dollars. That's the estimated cost as of this time, 4 million for construction and 1.2 million for engineering. That includes the final design, construction, management, and inspection, and construction support. This also includes not only finishing the fields, but also lighting, additional restrooms, landscaping, roadway extensions, and a roadway extension out to Sergeant Road. In addition to that, the Littleton Kitchen, if you've all been over there, you know that the refrigerator and some of our utensils, some of our appliances over there need a little help. And so the priority, at least as far as the staff is proposing, is that we refresh the, provide a new walk-in refrigerator, new cabinets, and $30,000 to replace lighting. Our proposed Phase Two is to finish Walker Park and construct two new adult softball fields, in addition to the three, at a cost of 5.3 million. And we, that price was initially, when we reported it in 2021, about 4.6 million, however, because of inflation and the CPI, it has now creeped up, or crept up to 5.3 million. And the last phase that we're proposing is that we continue refreshing the Littleton and the Chabola. The Littleton, there are 500, $500,000 to deal with issues with the floor, painting, entry doors, HVAC. The Chabola also needs attention with $75,000 for flooring, again, painting, replacing the kitchen cabinets and counters, exit doors, and the interior refresh. So these are just proposed scenarios for council. Again, the 4 million dollars will cover essentially all of our expenditures for parks maintenance, and with roughly $100,000 left over every year. Or we can make these adjustments, let the general fund continue to subsidize the LLDs, we'll take care of the one-time payment for capital, and find a way to cobble that 1, 1 million dollars a year to pay the bond off over 20, 25, or 30 years. So, Mr. Mayor and council members, the decision is yours. I just, we just put this before you to at least start the conversation. I would like to let you know that depending on how the conversation goes tonight, I would like to engage the architects who completed Hutchins Square down in Lodi. I don't know if you've seen that ballroom down there, but it is gorgeous. And so I merely wanted to engage them to take a walk through the Littleton and the Chabola, to get a feel for what could they do, how much would it cost, to bring it up to the standard that I see down at the Hutchins Square. And you'll, if you'll notice, everything that we're targeting is a revenue generator. So be it the ball fields, be it rentals for the Littleton and the Chabola, but these are revenue generating assets. So if it all works out the way it's supposed to, these assets will actually start to contribute to that debt service payment that we would make annually, should council choose to go in this direction. And, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my comments.
Thank you so much for giving us a well-rounded group of options, I guess. I'm curious to what my fellow council members have to say. Mr. Lozano, would you like to begin? He says he would like to hear from public comment. Is there any public comment?
Chris Brosman.
Thank you guys for the opportunity to address you tonight. I came in here with a lot of concerns, to be honest with you, and Mr. Hines has said a lot of those concerns to a better rest. My concern is that we really didn't determine, Measure Q in my mind is a supplement to the general funds that are currently being spent on parks and rec. And what I didn't see spelled out, like in Measure R, it spelled out that, okay, the city is going to continue to spend X number of general funds, and then Measure Q is going to come on top of that. So one of the things I would love to see is all five of you guys agree at some point that, okay, general funds is not going to just start robbing the measure, Measure Q dollars. I was very happy to hear that we're going to put the emphasis on the landscaping. I think that is the biggest need and the biggest blight on our city right now. I'm not a big person on borrowing money, because I hate paying banks. I like a savings plan and taking a percentage of Measure Q dollars, and every year we set them aside. And if we need $5 million to build some softball fields, we pull $5 million out of that savings plan, as, well, interest is cheap relatively, I mean, but 7% is 7%, and I don't like giving 7% to the bank at any time. I just really want to say Measure Q dollars were meant to supplement the general fund dollars that are going to parks and rec. And then I did have one other topic that I wanted to hit on, which was, for the second time this year, I've had to open my gun safe, pull out my .45, and put a round into the chamber. Had helicopters over my house again this weekend. I don't like having to go to my gun safe and pull a gun out.
Mr. Brosman?
Yes.
I don't mean to be rude, but I, Brosman?
Brosman.
Brosman, I apologize. Mr. Brosman, I don't mean to be rude, but I believe that actually those comments are meant for public comment, and any of your comments need to pertain to the topic at hand.
Okay. I had put it on, both onto the cards, just to let you know.
Okay. I apologize.
That's fine.
But I, I haven't heard, just quickly, I have heard that same compliment, I mean, comment, and I'm working to address it, I guess.
Really, my concern, to be frank with you as a chamber, is we're not getting notification as citizens that this problem went away. So I'm sleeping with a loaded .45 sitting by my bed, which I don't like, that I would just like the city to do a better job notifying us and saying, hey, this problem has been solved. Boom. And I've heard that from lots of people in the city of Galt. We still don't really know what the, just was.
Understood, I understood. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Just a comment and then a couple of questions. I know you guys have all probably been briefed, but I think the public needs to understand how this bond is going to work, because as in the other bonds that were passed for the high schools, this went before the voters, they voted, there was an oversight. I'm not, from the way you've been talking, it doesn't sound like it's quite like that. Or if it is, maybe that needs to be clarified of how this bond is actually going to work, because normally people vote for a bond, and then that comes out of their property tax. So this $1 million that you're setting aside to pay, I, I just don't understand, and it might be just because the gentleman couldn't get online. The other thing I would like to, maybe people to think about is, as has been said several times today, our city has grown, and as much as I would love to see money put into the Littleton Center and the Chabola Center, which desperately need it, I'm not arguing that, but we've outgrown those facilities. And so I, I'm wondering if there's some other sort of option somewhere that we can expand one of those facilities, or heaven forbid, bulldoze and make it bigger, or use the market grounds for something like that, or something that might be something to look into, because as we're gathering, you know, lighting of the night's a phenomenal event, but, you know, you guys have been in the Littleton Center when at its peak and it's standing room only, we've just outgrown our facility. So it just seems like, it's a great facility, there's a lot of history there, so I'm really not advocating to get rid of it, but it just almost seems like there's an opportunity here maybe to get something bigger for us to grow into, rather than what we've already grown out of. Other than that, I, it is, if this does have to go before the voters, I'm wondering how much, I mean, I think that's a two, every two-year process, so you're looking in a year and a half. There was very little campaigning for Measure Q, or even education from the city side, and so I would just strongly suggest that this has to go before the voters, that there definitely has to be a heck of a lot more done from the city side about educating the people to pass a bond, if that's where this needs to go. I don't understand that, so that might be something to explain.
Thank you, Bonnie. Is there any other public comment?
No public comment.
Oh. Okay, that would be great. That was my next question. So please let those gentlemen speak online.
Albert, David, we're going to put you online. And, but before you all start, gentlemen, this does not have to go before the voters. Measure Q went before the voters. The city is a municipal corporation, which is different than a school district, and so we have different requirements and different rights.
Thank you for that clarification.
Sure. Albert, you want to give a little background on issuance of bonds, and David, feel free to chime in.
Yeah, Dave, you want to unmute, but I'll go ahead and start. Yeah, thank you very much, Lorenzo, and members of the council, and members of the Gulf community. Yeah, as Lorenzo said, this does not have to go before the voters, and I'm going to let David explain why. This is a lease similar to the 2001 issue that the city, bond issue that the city issued to pay for a police station. Dave?
Yeah, thank you. Dave Fama from Jones Hall. We've been the city's bond counsel, and yeah, there are different types of bonds, and it is correct that some bonds require voter approval, but as Mr. Hines said, this is not that type. This would be a pretty standard financing tool that cities use via a lease, lease-back transaction, as was just mentioned. So it's payable from city funds, and it looks like it's Measure Q funds that the city would like to use for payback, but it really could be paid back from, from any source of city funds and not from property taxes as an override.
Is that all, sir?
Yeah, yes. I think that that addresses that first concern.
Okay, thank you. If you have nothing else to add, I will ask my fellow council members if they would have any questions.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'll kick it off. Is it David? Whichever of the gentleman online, a question, just, can you just explain to us, just in layman's terms, how this is going to work? Like, I mean, we have the graph in front of us. If I'm understanding this correctly, we can borrow, we can basically borrow 13.74 million dollars at three point, whatever the rate is. I know this is just a calculated, you know, whatever, so the rate can fluctuate, but we basically pay on that for 20 years, and that costs us 7.3 million dollars in interest. I mean, am I reading that correctly?
Mr. Pache, I think that would probably be something you could answer best.
Yeah, that would be the total interest cost for that. So there would be annual payments of principal and interest, and as you know, in the earlier years, a majority of the payments would be interest, and then obviously towards the latter years, it would primarily be principal repayment. So those, that would be the total interest cost, and one of the things that Lorenzo mentioned, which I think is important, this would, this would assume a $1 million annual payment, or 1 million or less annual payment, so about 25% of the expected $4 million of Measure Q proceeds that would be generated from the tax.
So, I don't know, correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm not an accountant, and, you know, I only had half a year of trig in high school, so not that's even relevant, but roughly a million dollar payment per year for 20 years, isn't that 20 million? I mean, if we're going to pay 7 million, 7.3 million in interest divided by 20 years, isn't that more like 360-something thousand per year?
No, well, the, in 20 years, you would have paid back the principal plus the interest, which would be about 20 million.
Gotcha, right. That's why you're an accountant and I'm not, so I'm asking questions.
Yeah, this, this table, we, we could have made this table a little bit busier, but we wanted to show you there was interest in showing what the total interest would be and how much could we generate.
Right, okay. But it is 7.3, but the, the amount of interest is seven point, is about seven and a half million, right?
That, that's correct, about 7.4 million.
Okay.
Based off of current rates as of last week, as of April the 11th.
Thank you for that information. I wanted to ask, this might seem a little weird, but I wanted to ask our city treasurer, just because he's here and sitting here, what's your opinion on something like this? Not to, not to put you on the spot, sorry, Sean, but...
No, that's fine. I think, I think the city manager wanted to kind of lay out options for you, okay? And, and, you know, one of those, one of the things are, you know, first you've heard from the Parks and Recreation Director as far as staffing needs, you also then heard, okay, you're going to have some excess funds, you know, based upon the, the previous screens. And, and I think he's, he's showing you your options. One is, this is an option. You can, depending on how many projects you want to complete and how soon you want to complete them, okay? So if you want the money upfront, and by issuing a bond, you get all that money upfront, you can complete all the different projects, capital improvement projects here for the Parks and Recreation Commission, or Department, okay? Or, as the gentleman who spoke, you can save the excess money, and you can actually, when you have the money in, in the savings account, as he mentioned, then you spend that money. So, and, and there's different, you know, that, that's what the city manager wanted to do, is just simply kind of have you provide some direction as far as which way you wanted to go. And yeah, you are reading this chart correctly, and Al can set it, you know, brilliantly. Yeah, when you issue a bond for 13.7 million over 20 years at the rate of almost 4%, yeah, you're going to be paying 4.4 million dollars in interest. That's the way loans work. So, I mean, again, you, you have the options. You can pay cash, okay? Or you can, you can basically pay, you know, have everything upfront and pay credit. I mean, we face, you and I, everyone faces that issue every day.
Yeah. Thank, thank you, Sean, I appreciate the insight. Thank you, Sean, I appreciate the insight. So, I mean, my initial thoughts are, you know, I, I don't know, I mean, I just, it, what I can say is that I know that these projects are important. You know, it's like, do you, like Sean was saying, do you, do we want the shiny new thing now, and we'll just pay payments on it? And if so, are we willing to pay that much interest? Is the public gonna be happy with the new park and all that stuff to use, and they're not really gonna really care about those loan payments and how much interest they're gonna pay, because all it's just, you know, the city finances, and as long as we have our nice fields that our kids can use and all that, we're all good? Is that gonna help be how some people feel? Probably, maybe. I also think that if we were to just, I'm kind of the guy who likes to save more than borrow, but I also think of like, okay, Measure R or Measure Q brings in $4 million, even if it was, you know, we were able to put 2 million of that aside, just for simple math, I mean, we need to raise, you know, 14 million dollars to do all the things that he had, you know, that's gonna take us seven years. So, I mean, are we gonna wait seven years to get Walker Park done? I mean, I don't think that's really realistic to do that, but I also think it might cost a lot more than 14 million if we wait seven years, because of the way things rise. So you have to think about, every year that goes by, it becomes more expensive to build. So these are just my thoughts, I'm sure that the councils probably think of some of the same things. So I'm just throwing that out there, I have a lot more comments on some other things about this, but just about the loan stuff, I just wanted to say that real quick. Thanks.
Mr. LaZollin?
I, I will only ask the questions regarding this piece, since we have the folks on the line. I guess my question is, and I asked when I was briefed on it, is there a way to take, let's just say we wanted to do, and I'm not necessarily proposing we do this, I'm just asking a question. So let's say we wanted to borrow the, I'm gonna round it up, 14 million over 20 years, is there a way to take that, receive that money and pay interest only on the money that we actually take from our commitment over time? And then, as we take, as we withdraw from that commitment, pay interest only on that commitment? So, an example is, let's say in the first year, we want to do $5 million for one of the items, 5.2 million for the phase one, and pay only interest on that, and then when we're ready within that 20 years, take another, whatever that next number is, 6.9 millions, and pay interest on both of those at that time. I don't know who would answer that, but...
Albert, are serial bonds an option?
Yeah, that was my initial thought, Lorenzo. What you could do is you could have a series of bonds where, let's say, you wanted to do phase one, you could issue 5 million in bonds, and then, once that gets spent two years down the road, you could issue Series B bonds for another 5 million or 7 million. And so you're really only paying interest on, on a shorter amount. The only thing is, I would say, you could be subject to interest rate risk when you issue the second series of bonds. Now, rates could go up and rates could go down, but that would be one way you could, you could look at that. The bond could be structured, it's called a series of bonds. And the school districts actually do that quite a lot, when they issue their general obligation bonds.
Yeah, if I can just, if I can just add one comment, what may have been, been referred to would be like, what we call like, you know, a drawdown loan, which isn't, isn't really a bond, that would be from a bank, where you set up, you know, kind of look at it as a line of credit for 20 million dollars, and then you draw it as you need it, and the bank charges you interest on, on the amount drawn. It's a, it's a little bit more difficult, and Albert, I, you can address this, it's a little more difficult to find that kind of thing at a bank. Banks aren't, don't have an appetite for that currently, it would take a lot of shopping, they probably wouldn't allow a 20-year term, the interest rate would probably vary over time. But I, I think what you were referring to is a, is a drawdown loan, that is a possibility, but realistically, it may not work here.
Can I step in for a second here? Can I ask a real quick question? David, this is Sean Farrell, can you explain why a secured certificate of deposit loan would not work in this case?
Yeah, so if the city were to go out and get a loan, number one, there's a constitutional debt limitation that is part of the California Constitution, where a city can, essentially, the bottom line is they can only borrow for one year. So you would have difficulty in getting a term loan that was more than a year. Now, we could do something that would be structured as a lease, leaseback transaction that technically wouldn't be a loan. Again, you'd have to find a bank that had an appetite for that type of transaction, you know, for the term you want, say it was five years, backing that obligation, that, that loan obligation, if you will, it's really a lease obligation, but call it a loan obligation, backing it with the collateralizing it with a CD or something like that, it would solely be up to the bank. We haven't seen that, that's not common, that's not to say that maybe a local bank that you work with might be someone to talk to about it, but it's, it's fairly out of the box for this type of financing.
How would that affect the interest of the life of the loan, or whatever you want to call it?
I'll address that part.
Okay.
So from a, from a bank's point of view, a regular, like, say, certificate of deposit loan is, is where an entity, even a personal, you know, even a person, has, makes arrangements for a certificate of deposit, let's say 3% over a term of, say, four years, okay? So then, the bank then uses that as collateral, they will then loan up to 90% of that, okay? And then, and then charge, say, an additional 2% more than what you're receiving. So they would charge you, the loan would be 5%, you would be being paid 3%, so your net cost is basically 2%, okay? So that's how, that's how that would work.
Okay, thank you.
But Albert, or David, can you, can you repeat the limitation on that, doing that for one year?
Yeah, I mean, that would be very difficult to do. Number one, you, you can't, you know, borrow like an individual can, and, and secure it with, with a CD or other collateral. The structure of the transaction has to be a lease, leaseback, and there are certain remedies that go with that, that don't include, you know, foreclosing essentially on a certificate of deposit. So in order to go out more than a year, again, if it was under a year, it would be doable, so go out more than a year, it's gotta be a lease transaction because of what we call the constitutional debt limitation that is imposed on all cities in California. And the bank would have to have the lease remedies, so the CD remedy would probably not contribute much in the bank's mind to the security. You might get, I don't know, this would be up to Mr. Pacheco to say, but I, you know, if we could even find it, you might get a quarter of a percent less on the interest rate, or something like that, for the additional security. But again, I've never seen that been done by a city, it would be, first instance, it would be very difficult to find, and my guess is it would be unobtainable.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that. In my years of experience, I haven't seen that structure used. You have seen bullet maturities for different bond issues, but it wouldn't be applicable here, but I would see the problem would be in five years, then you would have to go out and reset the rate, and then you'd have interest rate risk at that point, and I think that would be hard for the, for the bank or any buyer of this to take. I think that's another problem from a structural point of view, what are you gonna do in five years? You go out and reset it, and then what's your reset rate? With the traditional structure that we're discussing here, you have a locked-in rate, you know what the rate is, you know what your payments are, and not only that, in dependence how it's structured, in eight or 10 years, you have the ability to refinance it should rates come down.
Thank you. So, council, as Sean mentioned, that Sean, the crux here is, how quickly do we want to get these projects done? We are under, as you heard earlier, some passionate conversation about softball and baseball. And I've had conversations with Mike Selling, our Parks Director, informal, that if we were to get him 5.2 million, by June or July, when would he be able to have those three softball fields done at Walker Park? Mike told me very, very, with a whole lot of caveats, that perhaps fall of 2024. Because there's a lot of work that needs to be done. So, you know, so it's, again, it's, it's, it's how quickly we want these things done. And Mr. Mayor, I would also suggest that this conversation about Measure Q go on a separate budget track than the city's normal budget track. This would give council more time to discuss it and put it in play, and not have to deal with the pressure of the midterm budget, which is coming up here in, in May. And so putting us on a separate track allows this discussion to continue, because I want to make sure you're all comfortable with whatever the decision is. Again, all I'm doing tonight is presenting options.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Sure. Thank you.
So, not to dig into the weeds on the, what could we do with 13 million dollars? I mean, obviously, the 5.2 for the first phase is important, I believe the refrigerators and stuff for the Littleton are, need to be addressed like ASAP, but that's really small, small potatoes. But like you said, the 5 million you just mentioned about from Mike, you know, that's really not that much, I mean, 5 is not that much, it's not 13. So I'm, this is kind of maybe a crazy idea, and I'm not gonna claim that this is actually my own idea, it was suggested by someone else, but is there any possibility that we can just borrow the money from ourselves? Is that even legal? Is there any way that we could do that? Because I know we have other funds that are unallocated, undesignated for things, and I feel like 5 million is not that much, and I just don't even know if such a thing is legal, but I'm just throwing that out there.
So you're, you're talking about inter-fund loans, and right off the top of my head, the funds that would probably be targets for inter-fund loans are the utility funds. And when it comes to wastewater treatment, stormwater, those, those funds, there's a reason why those funds have a fund balance, because if something, if a calamity occurs, that calamity can't be addressed with 1, 2, or 300,000 dollars. It's going to probably take somewhere near seven figures to address it. So, we didn't bring up inter-fund loans, because those, there's a reason why those funds have the fund balances they have. And again, we're talking wastewater treatment, you've all been out there, you know how capital intense it is.
And those are the only funds that are...
The only funds...
Other than our reserve of 4.5 million, or whatever it is, I know that, I know that's there, but there's no other...
Those would be the only funds that I, off the top of my head, would be the targets, because I know they have significant fund balances, and, and there's a reason for those balances.
Vice Mayor Sandu?
City Manager, when we're talking about the funds, I believe we have a rainy day fund, 8 million dollar rainy day fund, and what, how much interest rate we're getting from that? Well, I'm just, I'm just comparing...
Yes.
When we're talking about the bond... It's the same thing, when we bought it, we buy like in 30 million, then after 20 years, we have to pay within other 7 million the interest. Total, we're going to pay it almost 20 million, right? I'm talking about, is, is, if that thing, we need to, right now, we need to use all the resources. What we have right now, if we're getting, if their money is in a saving, maybe getting 0.5%, why are we using that money before we go to, and we have a contract with 20 years, when we, as soon as we issue the fund, we can nowhere, then we bond for a 20 years? That's kind of something I like to mention to you.
Understood, sir, thank you for the question. We have undesignedated fund balance of 8.6 million, 4, 8.4 million, and we also have an economic reserve of another probably 4 million. And so there's 12 there. But those 12 million dollars are meant to act as a reserve for contingency for the city's total operations. So in the event that we get hit with a calamitous flood, or earthquake, or tornado, and we actually did have a tornado here months ago, it will take probably a week or so before FEMA gets here, and we need to figure out a way to survive. And so, that's why we have those contingencies. In the event that the economy takes a downturn, our TOT takes a nosedive, our sales tax takes a nosedive, we have a massive fire in the city, and the property taxes aren't there anymore, we still have to provide services to 26,000 folks. And so, those reserves allow us to have the confidence that we can survive any calamitous situation. While I propose using just a eeny-weeny bit of those reserves to take care of the one-time stuff, it doesn't make a huge dent in it, but, you know, those reserves, that's what makes us a viable entity. You noticed up here in this slide that it says ensure double A scale and A-plus underlying, those are our bond ratings. And so, if we were to start to dip into our reserves, the first thing that goes is those bond ratings, because you got Moody's and Standard and Poor's who no longer think we're a viable entity, because we have no savings, we have no cushion. So, Vice Mayor, that's why, while we can do that, I'm a little reluctant to present that as an option, because we need those funds to bolster our safety.
And, and right now, we have a reserve fund, and we also have the 8 million, so there is, what's our policy to how much reserve, 25% or 30%, right? That's 8 million is separate from that.
Correct, I believe our current economic reserve policy is 25%, and that's the roughly 4 million.
So that's why I'm talking, we have a two reserve, not just, there is a policy 25% for using whenever is emergency, but we still have, but I'm, I'm just comparing...
Right, right.
You know, when we buying the bond, we buying the loan, we buying the not loan for this council for 20 years. If that money, we need them right now, we really need to use, we have no other resources, yes, we need, but we need to look at the option, if there is any other option habit, for example, that 1 million, we putting the payment, even that million, we save every year, within five years, we can have another 5, 5 million in your saving.
Right.
So I'm, I'm, I'm just...
That's an option.
We need to be a little bit more creative.
To piggyback on the Vice Mayor, that's what I was actually, that's what I was talking about with the fund, and I, and I don't think we're, we're not advocating for using the 8 million, but I would like to point out, though, I remember when we first got on council, that we had a low, much lower threshold, and we beefed that up. You know, we're operating, what is our general fund, like 17 million or something like that?
Yes.
We have basically 13 million, so basically, we would have to literally have zero revenue for almost an entire year to have to need all that money. Now, we just came through a pandemic for three years, we went through a recession in 2008, never have I seen us touch any of that money, so the likelihood that we're gonna need to dip into all that money is probably not likely, but I'm kind of, it's not gonna sit here and advocate to use it all, but I'm saying, if you could take some of that 8 million and use, if you could say, take 3 million of that 8 million, and put that with 2 million left over for Measure Q, well, there's your 5 million, year one, and you could pay that 3 million back to the other, to the 8 million dollar fund, within probably 18 months, and we didn't have to borrow, and we didn't have to pay interest or anything. I'm just saying, it seems like we can be a little bit more creative and come up with that initial 5 million, and let Measure Q grow, and then by next year, we'll have a couple more million, maybe we can start working on the other. I, I just, I, so I like the idea, I think we should consider any and all option here to try to save ourselves 7 million dollars in interest, that's all I'm saying.
Any more questions, Mr. Vice Mayor?
No, thank you.
Mr. Papanow?
Well, first a comment, if I had a dollar for every time I heard that Walker Park in 10 years is not acceptable, I could pay for half of this. And that goes with, you know, comments or complaints about the Chabola and Littleton facilities. So, that being said, I'm interested in what we can do to try and make some of this happen, especially... especially softball and baseball fields. Because clearly, that's an issue. And refresh my memory, we have a grant application in through the Congresswoman currently for Walker Park?
For the three softball diamonds, 5.2. And, and for the folks in the, in the audience, we made the Congresswoman's top 15 priorities. So, we're very happy about that. She received 110 applications, and we ended up in the top 15. So, Councilman, thank you for allowing, indulging me while I brag a little bit about how the city is doing.
Okay, X, I couldn't, I couldn't remember the, the amount, if it was just for that or what. And is there a timeline on an expected answer on that?
We will probably hear about it when the federal budget is passed in the fall.
Okay. So, that obviously would change this conversation. And if we were to be lucky enough to get that, and we had also started down this road, can we basically pay ourselves back? To shorten this, because we don't need that full 13.747 anymore.
Okay. Albert, are you, Albert David, are you there?
Yes.
So, if we were to, Councilman, if I, if I slip here, just let me, just correct me. But if we were to do a bond issue for, let's say, the 13.747 million, and we find out in the fall that we've been granted another 5 million from our Congresswoman, because we're on her list of member requests right now, is it possible to not take the entire issue and return it? How, how does that work? If you've had a city, I, I know it rarely occurs where a city says, you know, we're going to issue bonds, and then six months later, they say, oh, no, no, we don't need all that. Here, take some back. Give me your thoughts.
Yeah, I think we could have, and I'll let Dave jump in as well, but I think we could have what's called an extraordinary call from grant proceeds within a certain period of time. And the buyers of the bonds would know, hey, if we get 5 million within three years, we can call that amount of bonds without prepayment. Otherwise, you know, the normal prepayment would be 10 years. But that would be called an extraordinary call. I mean, Dave, can you give your thoughts?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. We, we do do that occasionally, that's not an uncommon scenario. The way it usually gets structured is there would need to be two series of bonds. Because there'll be an interest rate, you know, penalty, so to speak, a little bit higher interest rate because of the ability to call the bonds away from the investors in, you know, three years, or five years, or whatever the trigger would be. So, the way it usually is structured is there would be a Series A that would be callable in, you know, 10 years, like was just mentioned. And then there would be a Series B that's callable, you know, beginning in three and ending in five, or something like that. And I'm not sure what the interest, you know, penalty is on that. And maybe, Albert, you know better. I, I think it's, you know, fairly hefty, you know, possibly 1% differential for that. Because investors demand that that gets covered.
Understood.
Yeah.
Councilman, did we? So, we can return the money?
It sounds like it's not out of the realm of possibility, or not that uncommon. And it may come with some, some penalty, perhaps.
Yeah, and one other comment, I mean, don't forget that you're borrowing the money. And, you know, if, if you haven't spent it, then you're sitting on the money paying interest. You know, if you have spent it, and then you're going to reimburse yourself or pay off the bonds from the grant, that might make more sense. But if you don't, if you can't spend it within the time period that you're looking at to find out about the grant, you probably don't want to pay interest on it. Yeah, I mean, there's just those kind of things to think about.
Yeah, thanks, Dave. I just like to add that you actually are earning interest on the project fund that mitigates the interest that you're paying out to investors. So, somehow that got, we didn't mention that earlier. But let's just say you, you borrowed 13 million, and it's going to take you two and a half years to, to spend it. You actually earn interest on that, and you can earn interest up to the bond yield and keep the arbitrage. Dave, you have to jump in here, but as long as you spend the money within, within three years, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, that's correct. Sometimes it's difficult to find a place to put the money that will earn you the bond amount, you know, the bond interest rate. Again, you know, kind of have to plan that out and shop around.
Yeah.
Very good, gentlemen, thank you. We've got the best treasurer in the state. So, if there's, if there's a vehicle out there that we can invest in, he's going to find it. So, so essentially, we can, as that 13.7 sits in a project fund, we can earn interest up to that 3.96% without stepping into the world of arbitrage. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Another, another thing I- Mr. Farmer, may I please?
Yes, please, go ahead.
All right, thank you very much. So, you know, looking at this spreadsheet here for everyone, I'm not sure what it's called, but, you know, I come to mind what our county supervisor, Pat Hume, often says, that the fish always grows to the size of the fish tank. And magically, this number at the bottom is the estimated revenue of Measure Q. I find it concerning, I know its possibilities, and I know some of these things I've asked for personally and advocated for strongly as far as Parks and Rec goes. But I would like to see it done a little bit different, honestly. I would like to see some of the items on here, but me, if it was me personally, I would, I'm not going to vote for a bond measure. I, I see no need in putting half to 100% of the citizens' money into the bank's pocket. I, I just, I can't swallow that. So, for me, on this item, you know, there's staff requests for positions. If you remove, let's say, you don't fill the supervisor's position. I have a question real quick on the facilities maintenance workers, too. The way it's written, and I should have asked this before, I apologize. But the way it's written, there's a full-time and a part-time. The full-time is 74,000, the part-time is 76,000, 67,000, excuse me. And that's about a $7,000 difference. Why would we not hire two full-time employees at a $7,000 difference? Did I am reading that incorrectly?
When, when we asked for it, I didn't think-
No, I'm just, I'm just-
No, I'm, when, looking at it, asking for the positions, I asked to be frugal with the part-time position. The number being $7,000 closer, you're right. It doesn't make any, it doesn't make sense not to make it a full-time.
Okay, so the number's accurate? Okay, personally, if you were going to do it, I would, I would hire two full-time positions. It seems for seven grand, it seems a, an easy spend. I also feel that, you know, is that going to make a person in public works unnecessary? So, I don't know if I would fill those positions, but skipping on, so if you, if we didn't, gave you some of the other positions, we didn't fill the supervisor's position, we didn't fill the full-time office position, the items that are capital equipment purchases, those are really items that are supposed to be in the Parks and Recs budget. And I know it's tight, I'm not trying to say that, you know, it's not a struggle. But those are normal, standard, year-to-year, long-term planning issues. So, if you remove that one, and the same with the bottom, this, the training, office supplies. And the reason I'm saying all this, if you add those totals up, you end with 560,000. If you continue to leave the general fund as is, that, and with the O6, that gives you like two point, the items at the bottom, that gives you 2.6 million. If you have that 2.6 million, which is really, we're still giving Parks and Recs a lot of positions to address the maintenance issues that many people have complained about. And it finally actually just getting the city back to normal standards from three years ago. That would give us about 2.6 million. If you took some of the extra funds from the 8.4 million, let's just say you took 1.4 million, now you're talking, you know, just about enough to cover the item for Measure, Phase 1 of Walker Park, considering that you would have to go through engineering, et cetera, et cetera. It may be a year before you actually do any construction, and you could easily have the other million or so acquired. So, we wouldn't actually hurt our rainy day fund. We wouldn't have to borrow any money, and we could still get the things we want if we're just willing to continue to tight, keep our belts tight and focused on, you know, focus that way. So, that's all I have to say. I'll, and it just as part, as a mechanical part of the meeting, you know, we've all had our opinions to some degree, and maybe there's more to be said, and that's fine. But at some point, we need to agree, maybe we'll just go down the line items here and agree what we can agree upon and, and give a consensus. Because it doesn't have to be a, an official vote. So, with that, is there any other comments from staff? I mean, sorry, from council?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I have other questions. And so, regarding some of these positions, Armando, we sat down and we met, and you talked about how you wanted to bring facility maintenance, you know, for Parks and Rec facilities under your arena, under your belt, instead of public works for the reasons you mentioned earlier. So, the three, so just to clarify, the positions that you would be bringing on that would make that happen would be the facility, the facilities make, the full-time facilities maintenance worker, one, the part-time facilities maintenance worker, whether it's a full-time or a part-time, I get that makes sense. And then the four part-time. So, it's those six positions, whether they're full or part, right?
And, and the office assistant.
And, right, to handle the, yeah, okay.
We're, we're getting all the, the service request orders. I don't have the admin staff to handle these type of extra work. I'm taking on more work, and without any clerical help, that's why that admin position's in there.
So, I just want to clarify that those are the positions that you feel, that you feel would be necessary to take over facility maintenance. Just want to clarify that.
Yes, because when, when things happen, it, it's us that are getting blamed. So, if, if I'm going to get blamed, then let me take on the responsibility of getting it done.
No, I understand the concept, I, I get it. I mean, if you want to do it yourself and not sub it out to public works more, so to speak, then that makes sense. But my concern is, just shifting, kind of going off that, I wanted to establish that first, is that we're talking about, and this is if they were the way you presented them here, part-time, full-time, we're talking about 220 man-hours a week of work that you're going to bring in-house. Well, if you're currently, you're currently getting those, those, those services, you know, not to your liking, as you mentioned, and, and not as fast as you like, but you're currently getting those from public works, correct?
Yes.
So, my question is, if we're now bringing 220 man-hours into Measure Q and being paid for on Measure Q dollars, we're now essentially paying for things that were paid for at a general fund, now at a Measure Q, and that I have a kind of a problem with. And my next, and to piggyback with that is, what are, what are we going to do with now 220 hours in, in, in public works? That's like five full-time positions, they're not going to lay five guys off. So, my question, I know Mr. Han stepped out, but my question to the council is, what, what do we do with those 220 minutes? Like 1,000 hours a week, or almost 1,000 hours a month of man-hours that we're no longer needing because we've now recreated that somewhere else, so.
Yeah, that was kind of my point. But I'm sure there's, about to explain how busy these people can be.
Mayor and council, as far as what I would say the difference, what I would expect here as for public works, we currently have five part-time janitorial positions. And, and right now, we only have one filled. We can't find people. But I would say with, you know, Parks taking on these four part-time, Parks Maintenance Workers for the Janitorial, that we would probably drop two of those vacant positions. So, we would go from five to three on the janitorial side. And that's because we're still maintaining and cleaning all the other city facilities, so.
Okay. So, it makes sense, but, but again, goes back to my philosophical question. Whereas now, we're getting into the kind of the murky waters where Mr. Brosman was even mentioned. It's like, I feel like now, we're now paying for stuff out of Measure Q that was, that was previously paid for, was, was general fund dollars. And now we're getting into some, some, some gray, gray area with the people that were very adamant against Measure Q are going to be like, that's what I was talking about. We're going to start shifting shell gaming money around, paying for this out of that. And, and I'm not saying that's, we, we, we're all going like this intentionally do it, but this is what's happening now, is we're starting to pay for stuff, you know.
That's, that's not really true. Because right now, maintenance is coming over to Parks and Rec. And I know the public is not aware of this generally, but maintenance is coming over to Parks and Recs fixing something, and then they're charging Parks and Recs, so that money is sliding over. We're just eliminating that slider of, of cash, correct?
To, to some degree, I'm going to look at finance, because I don't really see how the money moves behind the scenes, so. But I, I think that that's relatively accurate, Mayor, but Matt may correct us also.
So, for our facilities maintenance staff, unless they're working on a specific, like CIP project, they don't direct charge their time. They are part of the cost allocation plan, but that's based on building square footage that they service. And I don't believe we include like the, our parks facilities outside of, you know, we have City Hall, Chabola, Littleton, our actual structures we occupy. But if they're doing work out in a park somewhere, that's not being captured by the cost allocation plan.
Okay, so I framed it incorrectly, but would that allocation be reduced or eliminated?
It wouldn't be affected, because the, the time that they're working on a park right now isn't being charged to the park.
Right, but you guys are backcharging a percentage, right? For easier math, it's like a, a simpler system to say, we're going to do percentages instead of calculating all these hours and punching cards, et cetera, et cetera, correct?
But by, by adding that, there's no transfer from the Parks and Rec Fund to General Fund for those staff going and working in a park right now.
What's the, the money that you're charging to Parks and Rec, where's that go?
That's part of the cost allocation plan.
Right.
For the facility maintenance staff, their allocation is based on building square footage. So, there's some for Chabola, potentially, that would be recalculated. But if they're working out on a park structure in, in the park, that's not part of the cost allocation plan. So, that would be a separate charge that's not being recovered.
Clear as mud, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, right, right, exactly. I guess the, I'm trying to simplify it. The bottom line is that money from Parks and Recs goes to other departments, right?
Or central services, yes.
Right, okay, so, and that, that, that would or would not be what Mr. Farmer is trying to point out? That, I'll just leave it there.
So, there is a portion of it, but I think what they're saying in, in the staff report, a lot of that is new stuff that isn't currently being, the costs aren't being recovered for those services.
Okay. I'll, I'll leave that right there instead of getting more muddy. Mr. Farmer, sorry, sorry for the interruption. Mayor, I mean, city manager, yes, you have a comment?
I stepped out for a moment. I understand someone had a question for me.
No, you were here for most of the conversation. You, Mike answered it, and, yeah, it was, that's the conversation they were having.
Yeah, sorry for this.
So, again, the bigger picture is, the philosophical question we go back to is, and, and again, I went through a resolution, is did we intend Measure Q money to, to completely, to be, to supplement and help, you know, enhance Parks and Recreation in this town? Or did we, we intend to just give all that money back? Now, I know the city manager did say, in some of the scenarios, that we would keep continuing to fund lighting and landscape from, from the general fund. And so, there is that options to do that. But, and I think we should really be looking at those. Because what's happening is, most of our Measure Q money is being drawn down by putting all back. What would be stand, what would we end up with, basically, if we, if we didn't do that, the lighting and landscape, we did the first option? We essentially would be saying, Parks and Rec is going to stand completely on its own with Measure Q. It's going to get no money from the general fund. And, and I don't think that's really fair, because all the other departments get something from the general fund. There still needs to be some contribution, whether it's keep the lighting landscape, whatever, or the whatever. But the point of it is, if we just do all that, then the taxpayers voted for a tax measure that generates $4 million, and all they're going to get is extra lawn mowing, and that's going to be the end of it.
Well, I kind of have an answer. I mean, if we go back a little bit in history, Park and Rec used to be completely funded, plus surplus, to the general fund. Spilled over. And then they gradually lost their funding as the market continued down and down and down and down. So, they were not only not funded anymore, they were then bleeding the general fund to support them. And, at the same time, cutting everything back and letting the landscapes fall apart. So, yeah, we fell into a spot where we're bleeding the general fund from other things to support Park and Rec. If we put them back to full funding, I think that was the intent of Measure Q, was to get them fully funded. And they did, used to be fully funded. They didn't originally take, what is it, $2.1 million a year out of the general fund.
But no city contributes $0 to the general funds. I mean, in our city website, it says, Parks and Rec is important to quality life. It's like in the first paragraph, but yet we're basically- we're basically going to say, but it's not important enough to take any money from the general fund and give it to Parks and Rec. I'm not advocating for taking anything back, but you, what you have is, you have 1.5 million, which, which to be honest with you, I was given those numbers by finance this afternoon. 1.5, I'm not even sure. I know that's a budgeted number, Matt, but never have we ever contributed 1.5 to just Fund 06. I mean, if you look at the historical data, 1.5 is significantly more, even the lighting landscape numbers are significantly more. So what I'm getting at is, though, you're taking a lot of money back, plus your central service costs, which I mentioned. So as you've seen by the graphs, what you end up with is like, you literally end up with less than $2 million left out of the $4 million, significantly less than that. And I don't think that the public's going to go along, go wait. We passed a bond measure to increase, and all we're getting is, we're going to buy some lawnmowers and some new trucks and hire 14 more people. We're going to cut the grass more often, and that's the end of it. Because that's essentially kind of what we're doing without going out for bonds and things. We, we, there's money there that can be found and, and sharpened a pencil and, and find. And I think there's clever ways we can do things. But I just want to have, before we can go down that road, and maybe this conversation, of course, won't conclude tonight, but before we go down that road, we need to have a philosophical question about exactly, what did we, what did we intend? Because I read the resolution we passed, Mr. Papinow, and it does not say in there anywhere that we are going to give all the money back, lighting, landscape, all that. It doesn't say any of that. It just says that we're going to use the money for Parks and Rec to enhance yada, yada, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm just saying, we need to be clear on what we're doing here because the resolution doesn't say either way.
No, no, it doesn't. And as I said, Park and Recs used to be funded, but the market failed, and it didn't do that anymore. And we're a unique city because we had that property that could be used to fund it. And it did for a long time. So, you know, no other city had that.
Right.
Mr. Lozano?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. First of all, what is your capital, capital equipment budget right now, in the current budget we have?
What we did is we just doubled, I'm sorry, capital?
Yeah.
Just for Parks, correct?
46.
Yeah, 2146.
And then while you're looking that up, Armando, I have another question, or two questions. One, this level of service that's been described tonight with the additional FTE and all of that, where does that take us in terms of the landscape maintenance that was proposed, or I'm sorry, that was presented, I think it was last summer or fall? Remember the options that you gave us? And I think we all said we liked option two at the time, but.
Service option, weekly mows, weekly trims on parks and, on, and landscaping.
Yeah, I think this would be that option one plus some.
Yeah. This will be all of those things.
Okay. And then?
So 457,000?
Yes.
Almost 458,000 in capital.
And that's what's been saved over how much time?
That, that's the, the current budget for this year. So that's not an amount saved, that's just what we've been authorized to expend for the current fiscal year.
How does that fit into the 341 that's being asked for?
So the 341 would be in addition to what we already have budgeted.
Okay. And then I'll, I, it doesn't matter, but well, offline, I'll have a, a question about the 457,000. But, so my other question is this, have we looked at recently, and I know you have, like a year ago or two, maybe, contracting out these services to a private company? And would that be more cost effective?
No.
I, I don't believe it would. We did that, I believe, a year and a half ago, two years ago. It just, it, the stuff that we're getting done, I, I think the guys are doing a tremendous job doing what they're doing now. Again, we're, we're able to pivot when there's, there's things wrong, when it rains, when it, when other things need a special attention. But if that's the, if council would like us to do that, we'd send out an RFP.
From the same, from the same meeting that Mr. Lozano mentioned, there was, if I remember correctly, there was a, a line item for outside services. And it was, if I remember correctly, it was like 60% higher was a significant jump.
It was a lot higher than, than what we were able to do it for.
And was that because they, the, the contractors didn't want to come to our, our city to conduct that small amount of work? Or was that?
That was an actual RFP for the, the level of service we were asking for.
Based on what we're going to, what you're proposing today?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. I got to ask a question, right?
Oh, no, I, believe me, I.
We've got to save taxpayer money where we can and.
And, and believe me, it's a lot less work for me if I have, if I'm just sending one guy out to do.
I get it, but, you know, managing contracts like that is no easy task either. So.
And we found that out with the last contract.
Right, right. So, and, and again, I'm not a person to contract out employee work, but certainly I'm willing to ask the questions.
And, I'm sorry, go ahead.
One other question I had, you know, I'll come back to it.
Can, can I just point out too, when we were talking about grants earlier today, and our, our city council approved Public Works to apply for grants also, and that included another one for Walker Park. So the three that are being applied for are the Gore Aquatic Center Pool, Pool Slide, the Chabola Skate Park, and Walker Park Two. So we're continuing to apply for grants, trying to get money other than just trying to possibly fund it. So I want you to know that we're still looking for alternative revenues for that.
I appreciate that. And, and I know that we are working toward getting stuff, if not already, to our legislators for their one-time asks.
Yeah, we're, we're doing a few avenues trying to get the funding.
Yeah, I, I, not all that optimistic after last week about getting into those from the state, but certainly having those, having our legislators have that in their back pocket. I mean, that's what, you know, replaced the turf out of Walker Park. So.
Correct.
Thanks.
Is there any more questions from the council?
I have more questions.
Well, I, go ahead. I, go ahead.
I mean, it's an important topic.
It, it is, it is. At some point, I just want to maybe go through each, each item and kind of at least give staff.
We have one more in the week question.
All right. Tally ho.
Mr. Boring, you sent me some. Thanks, Franzano. Mr. Boring, you sent me some updated information. Actually, it came from Mr. Heinz, but I'm assuming it came through via your office regarding, you know, I, I was looking at these lighting landscape numbers, and I'm like, I just don't understand why the West Side subsidy is 438 and the, or the, I'm sorry, the East Side is 438, or vice versa, or whatever. These numbers you're giving here, it's 438, 131, and 56,000, when basically from the, and I know you tried to explain it to me, so maybe you can explain it again because I don't seem to understand, but from the, the ACFR, for example, the Northeast lighting landscape brings in 475,000. Its total expenditures are 563,000. So clearly, there's a deficit there, but the deficit's not $438,000. I mean, none of these are even close to these numbers. So I just don't understand how we're coming up with that much. And then I went through the historical that you sent me that was the graph. Actually, I have it on my computer, but I'll just go from memory where you said, well, here's what we historically have paid over, you went back to like 2018, I think, and you said, here's what we subsidized. And in one year, it went up like 40%. And, and then now went from, from, from fiscal year '21 to '22, it went up 40, 40 or 50%. But you have it projected of being 100% more than that now, pretty much across the board. Those percentages historically have been whatever, and you haven't predicted as like massively higher. And I'm just understanding, how could they, how could lighting and landscape districts jump that much?
So comparing the historical data and what's reported in the ACFR, the 438,000 that you're referencing is the current budget amount. So when we presented the budget, we have to present a balanced fund. So the, we take, you know, anticipated revenues, here's all the operating expenditures and capital and everything else we have. And through the budget process, we identified the 438,000 deficit in that fund. So we have to budget a balanced fund. But we only transferred the actual amount needed to balance the fund at the end of the year. That's why the, you know, it varies from year to year, and it looks like a huge jump.
So it could be significantly lower at the end of it all.
Yeah. So the 438,000 is if all of the budget expenditures were to come to fruition and a revenue, you know, we were pinning on, on our estimates, that's the total amount required from the general fund to balance the fund. And so through the year-end process, usually sometime around the end of September, once we've processed all of our year-end adjustments, we'll go through and look at actual revenue expenditures for the Parks and Rec Fund and the lighting and landscape district funds, and then we'll process a, a transfer to balance those funds as necessary.
So would that also explain, and again, now I'm referencing the exact chart which you sent me, where in, for example, back in 18, we were contributing just to, just from the, the subsidy from the general fund to Fund 06, not counting the lighting landscapes, it's just separate, we were, we were chipping in about 470,000. Then it jumped significantly. And then in 2020, which was obviously right at the front of COVID, I guess, we were contributing 1.39. And then for '21 and '22, there was no subsidy. And I went back and looked at those reports, and that was because obviously the Parks and Rec didn't do as much business, so they weren't generating as much expenses. We also had some private, we had sale of property at 350-some thousand. So I was, there was actually some leftover, it was like zeroed out, but we didn't have to contribute anything for two years. But now your prediction for the, to starting in is 1.5 million. So that's a huge number going from nothing to now 1.5, when in my, when my thought is, what could significantly difference between last year and this year, other than the sale of 350,000 in property? And maybe we're doing a little bit more business, but to go from zero to one, to 1.5 seems really high.
Well, for, for comparison, the, for fiscal year '22, we had budgeted roughly over 800,000 for a general fund subsidy to Parks and Rec. But because of COVID and other items, we didn't need to transfer that. So that's the difficult thing going from the actual amount to the budget, because the budget's saying, you know, here's, if we were able to fund all of the positions and get all of our capital projects done and everything else, that's the total amount needed. So in all likelihood, the actual amount we transfer for fiscal year '23 will be significantly less.
That makes sense. And so I only say all this, and just the greater picture is, and thank you for that information. And all that makes sense to me. And thank you for being patient with me and sending me the multiple thing. But what I get is, kind of go back to what the mayor was saying, is, you know, we're looking at like, well, we got to fix this. I mean, there seriously is like, you know, 100,000 there, 50,000 there, whatever. You start adding all those up, and then some of the things the mayor talked about, and all of a sudden, you have a million dollars. And I mean, we're talking about generate, you know, rounding up 500, 5 million for Phase One of the project. I just don't think it would be that difficult to scrounge up that money. The other question would be to Sean Farrell is, how much money do we, how much interest do we generate on that eight, eight-point, whatever million dollars that we have sitting there? And, and with, and, and whatever that number is that we generate in interest from it just sitting there unused, I saw here that it said that phase, there was a certain phase of the park that went up in one year from last year, what the construction cost from last year to this year, went up $750,000. So I can estimate, if we wait another year to build a park, inflation might cost us another 750. We have that money there. We could use a piece of it to do something. We're not, I mean, we would probably, you know, offset the cost of what it would cost us inflation and waiting. So again, again, go back, I think there's lots of creative things we can do here, and we can sharpen our pencils and find, you know, monies and things without having to. So that's the point I was making. Thank you, Matt, for the information, Matt, and Mr. Heinz for sending me that stuff today.
Councilmember Farmer, do you want me to answer your question as far as what we earned?
Yeah.
So at the end of, of March, in, in my, in my treasury report, the city earned 2.84% on all of its money collectively.
So 2.84 on eight and a half million would be what?
Oh, that's.
16, 16,000?
Okay, so 8 million. And what is it, 2.84?
Yeah. 227,000.
And that rate is going to, is slowly moving up as the Fed raises their rate.
Okay. Are you done, Sean?
Yes, I am, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. You know, I would just wonder, as I was thinking and writing some notes, through COVID, our, our general fund is, our revenue has been shown to be very stable compared to other cities. Personally, considering, I'm glad Mr. Papinow brought up the grants, I think it would be unwise to issue bonds or purchase bonds, however you want to view it, without knowing the results of those, because we could very simply not need a large portion of this request in, you know, several months. And Measure Q and Measure R are basically identical, correct, Mr. Boring?
Measure R is a half-cent sales tax measure, and it's a, a special tax, so it's in a separate fund, and it has restricted uses on it.
Let me clarify. I apologize. The revenue streams are from the same taxable items, yes?
Yes.
So you can give us a, a reasonable estimation of year-to-year growth?
Correct. Our sales tax consultants will give us an estimate for Measure Q also.
So to your point that things go up, so does the revenue. Okay, so if there's no more questions, I'd like to go through each of these items and get a consensus from the council so that staff has a firmer idea of what we're really committed to. If that's all right with everybody else? So first, let's just go with the, the bonds. I am against them. Vice Mayor?
I'm not ready for this time because there's two reasons. One thing, I, I believe I'm going to myself, I make a commitment to the public, this fund should exactly use for the Parks and Rec. If we taking the $1 million to buying bonds, that's different. The second thing, if we have a funds, I does not want to go out there to borrow it unless absolutely be necessary. And third thing, I, I hate to put something in a 20-year. And that's my three things I'm against about.
Councilmember Papinow?
I am never a fan of paying interest. And opposed to paying on depreciating items, however, things like a house or like these that would be revenue generating, I, I would be in favor of considering the bond option to get these things done in a shorter window, much like the bond was done to build our police station. It's a, not a, not an uncommon practice. And as I said, we all, you know, well, at least speaking for myself and most people, we have mortgages on our houses. That's the, that's the reality sometimes. And if we can get a lot of these things done, not only revenue generating, but to provide them to the city in a shorter term, then I'd be in favor of considering it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Farmer?
Yeah, I mean, I, I do, I do think that Walker Park is very important, and those things, we need to get those done quickly. But until we exhaust any and all options about looking at our own money that we have, like we talked about some various things, and sharpening our pencils, as I was going earlier, I would not be comfortable with doing the bond yet either, especially with the grant hanging out there. I don't really want to wait, you know, six more months for that. But I just think we haven't looked at all the options, and I don't think, I'm not comfortable with borrowing without looking at all those other things first. So that's my answer.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Lozano?
I, I too am not one for borrowing. But as Councilmember Papinow said, we all probably, or most of us have started out with a home loan. I do see the value in bringing some of these things online where the, the community has an expectation for their Measure Q dollars at work. So I do believe that we need to bring them on sooner than later. I would ask that if there are any other options, like we've discussed tonight that come available, certainly have staff look at those to bring them back as potential options to do that. If the question is, is what I, I, I would certainly entertain borrowing for a short term to get some of these things online so that we can improve our facilities, our, and, and you know, it is, it's likely going to bring in some revenue. And so I think that that, is it 13 million or 14 million that I have an interest in? I don't know, probably not. But I think there's some creative ways that we can use some of our own money, save some money, and get some things done that will bring our facilities up to speed. And maybe that's starting with, you know, I don't know, the Littleton or. And maybe that's starting with, you know, I don't know, the Littleton or the Chabola, or heck, Mr. Rodriguez brought up an idea tonight, you know, potentially, are those current facilities, those facilities that are going to be there in two years? Maybe, maybe not. Maybe, you know, there's another property in this area that we could build a facility at and reutilize those others for something else, or bulldoze them, if that's the case, we need to. But that, that would be my direction, I know it doesn't sound very pointed, but I would say two things. One, I'd like to bring some facilities and things on for our community sooner than later. I don't know that 13 or 14 million bond, dollars in bonds today would be a decision I would make, but I would certainly look at a portion of that, or using some of our own money. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Is that clear enough for staff?
Yes, based on what I'm hearing, the, the, the direction of the council is to try to find some other options that utilize the funds that we currently have, and the four million that we are due to receive in the future. The bonds, it looks like there's not a consensus for pursuing the bonds right now, but you always know that that option's available. Also, there is a specter of the grant that is, that the Congresswoman is trying to get us. So I think we, I think we understand.
Okay, thank you. So I'm gonna go down the landscaping maintenance staff needs Measure Q spreadsheet, if you guys have that, I don't know. So I'll just, I'm just gonna go group by group as it's laid out here, so the full-time parks supervisor, Mr. Vice Mayor, are you for or against?
You know, let me ask Armando, Armando, that the position you mentioning, the supervisor, how important that position, and why are you considering that position?
I don't believe in the current format that presented to you that I can do the job. If you look at the fact that we're, now we're gonna almost double our staffing, I'm gonna bring in facility maintenance, I'm gonna bring in janitorial, and now that leaves the current superintendent that we have in place to where he's, as I told Councilman Farmer, he had to go out and jump on a lawnmower the other day, because we need to get some stuff done. We're already running short. So my thought process is that the supervisor would be able to take care of all the landscaping, Armando would still be able to do the administrative work, but he also was the facility maintenance manager before he moved over to Parks and Rec. So he could handle the facilities and the janitorial, he also handled janitorial. The thing is, is that you're gonna start providing us money to get things done. Now I have one supervisor to supervise, was it, so 17, 20, 31 guys, or 30 people?
You're saying, just for clarification, you're saying 31 people if we approve everything on this list?
Yeah, if you approved everything on the list. Yeah, so you're having one superintendent that's laying out the work for all the, the facilities, for the landscaping, handling contracts, doing a contractor. He, he needs help. And I, and understand that that supervisor is a working supervisor. He is not gonna be in an office, he will be out in the, in the parks, in the landscaping, handling all of the issues, dealing with that. He is not somebody that's gonna have an office to sit at all day, that's not what his or her position will be.
So that's me, right now you have only parks superintendent, you don't have any supervisor, right, currently?
I have, I believe what they're called are a senior. So what those guys are just, they're a higher-level worker that go, that works out in the, in the field.
This chart is showing like, there is a parks supervisor, do you creating that position, or we have?
It would be backfilling the position that was...
Eliminated some years ago. Yes?
Um, was it some years ago? It was less than two.
It existed and it doesn't anymore, but the position is there.
You creating that position, not the?
No.
No, the position is still there, it is not filled currently.
So, Mr. Matt, that position still there, or we creating the position?
No, they're not, they're not creating it, Paul.
It's not funded.
Yeah, we, the job classification is, is existing, but that position is currently not funded. So this request would add funding for that position.
Correct.
Correct. So it would increase the, the budget and add one FTE.
All right, thank you for the clarification.
So are you for that position, sir?
Yeah, let's ask everybody else, then I...
Okay, Mr. Papinow, are you for that position?
I, other than the item pointed out of the cost of one and a half full-time positions versus two full-time positions, I didn't see any inefficiencies in there, and at least that I can point out. And of course, Armando and Mike and Matt have, I don't know, 70 years more experience with that than I do. So yeah, I would support, other than that one change, I would support the plan as presented, including that supervisor.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Councilman Farmer?
Well, let me ask one quick question here, because Armando, before I say, the full, when you and I had a conversation, Armando, we talked about what some of these positions would pay. You had told me that some of those lower full, part-time ones are probably gonna be the lower, like 18-something, but I noticed that when I got the printout from Mr. Boring, that they're all pretty much, except for the office assistant, all, they're all $23 to $25-something, right? So is that correct? So there is in fact none of the, none of the lower?
There, there are, it's a parks worker, too, the others are, are parks maintenance workers.
I don't see, the chart I got, everything's hourly rate, 2304, 2304, 2557. There's nothing lower than that.
What chart are?
I'm look, the Measure Q additional staffing.
So those hourly rates are in the current approved salary schedule, so for whatever that job classification, it would fall within that range that's in the salary schedule.
And I'm not, I'm not saying they shouldn't or should, I'm just, wanna clarify that we had a discussion that was a little different. So my question is too, though, I did ask you, Matt, about the overall cost of those positions, and why the numbers seem to not add up with the rates, based on for whatever, and you said, well, we added, well, it might have come from Mr. Heinz, so I apologize who it came from, but you guys are both copied on it. It said that we, we've added 40% for benefits and stuff, so you're taking the basic what we pay, and you added 40% for all the work comp and all that kind of stuff, but is, is 40% a good solid number? Because I've had employees, it seems a bit high, 40%.
Yeah, the, these were put together quickly for this presentation, so we're not asking for any budget appropriations tonight, so we would go through, we just haven't, we're working on updating our midterm budget right now. So when this comes for some approval, we'll plug them in through that and get the actual salary and benefit rates for the assumptions we use. So 40% is a rough, decent rough estimate.
And it would be different between full and part-time, right? Because you, you might, you'll still have PERS for part-time now, but you're not gonna have...
Correct, we wouldn't have like the medical, dental, and vision for part-time.
Yeah. So thank you for clearing for that. So to answer your question, Mr. Mayor, I, you know, you know, it comes down to like, we trust our staff or we don't trust, and believe me, nobody like asks as many questions and beats up on the staff about the stuff as much as I do. But, you know, part of me thinks of like, with regards to some of these positions, Mr. Mayor, part of me thinks, you know, it's like when I bought my first car, when I was a kid, I was 16, and I had $800, and I was looking at a $1,200 car, and I went to my dad and said, can I borrow $400 to buy this car? And he said, well, the car's priced really good, so here's $200. And I'm like, well, Dad, that's only 1,000, I'm still short 200, and he said, well, you're gonna have to make that work. And I did, I made it work, and I got creative and negotiated and so on and so forth, so you know, I mean, could we trim a position right here and say, let's start off with this and see how it goes? And then, you know, and then if we think we need more added on, because it's, it's easier to do that than it is to say, you know what? We're gonna, we're gonna let somebody go because we don't think we need them. I know this is an estimate, using his expertise on what he thinks he needs to provide a level of quality parks and maintenance to this level. So part of me doesn't wanna dispute that. I'd rather give him the positions and try to sharpen the pencil in other places that I think it can be. So I'm kind of on the fence about it, Mr. Mayor, to be honest with you. I do believe the supervisor position could be required, but it's hard to say.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lozano?
Yeah, I'll try to keep it short. I, first of all, I would wanna thank staff for the briefing ahead of time, gave me some opportunity to, to really look at this. I too saw the difference between the full-time and part-time and thought, why don't we spend the extra few bucks and, and get 20 hours more work, or whatever it is? Listen, here's my perspective, we're asking them, meaning the Parks and Rec Department, to provide a higher level of service, actually double. Just, if we're just looking at the park maintenance, we're asking them to go to mowing four times a week as opposed to two. We're asking them to provide all this service that, at least I have been hearing about for several years, about how horrible it is. In fact, I still get texts and email about lawn clippings that are on the sidewalks. And, and I see them work, I mean, I happen to live in a part of town where they do a lot of work, and I, and they're out there at Sunday mornings at 7 o'clock in the morning, doing their thing. And so we're asking them to double their amount of workload just in that area. And, and I don't know that it's unreasonable to have a supervisor make sure that the work gets done. And, and so I would be supportive of the positions, and we're going from seven full-time to an additional seven full-time, then we currently have 10 part-time, and I'm talking about the whole, not, not just landscape maintenance, but everything, and then moving to an additional seven part-time. I think it's reasonable, and, and I would expect that, that as we move forward, if there's efficiencies or areas that we can trim our operations and maintenance budget, then we do it. And that doesn't go, that's not just for Parks and Rec, but certainly every department that we have. That would be my expectation, so that's my...
Okay, so could I, could I please ask for clarification? You're saying yes to the supervisor, the Parks Maintenance Worker 1 for full-time, 2 part-time? The 4 part-time for Parks Maintenance Workers 1, Janitorial Section, and the Facility Maintenance Workers?
Yes, and that...
And the Office Assistant?
To, that, but everything presented.
Everything presented.
With the exception of the part-time.
Same as Kevin.
Fields Maintenance, Facilities Maintenance Worker to 2 full-time, instead of 1.
Is that what you felt as 2 as well, Mr. Papinow? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd actually like to make a compromise here on my thoughts. I agree with the full-time, taking the two facilities and making them full-time. I would agree with, with the, you know, the upping to make them full-time, but in, to try to, you know, to be fair, I, I would like to maybe see them, you know, work with the, with the 4 part-time janitorial, which we agree that we feel like part-time is kind of like, why not get full-time for seven, you know, for 7,000 more dollars, whatever? I would like to see, maybe we cut one of those positions and just do three full-time people on that position right there. And then if they find out that they really need it, maybe add the back. But if we can save $60,000, which is what we have in there, 60,000, that's, you know, that's a, that's a Littleton refrigerator, and some other things that could cover just for that one. And if they need it, we can, we can, we can go out and hire for it, but I think it's compromising a little bit.
I'm sorry, you confused me, it sounded like you're, you wanted to add this and subtract that, instead of just going straightforward. Which, which one, which one is that on, on this, on this side?
On this graph? No, it's on the, the flip sheet, you're right there on your left, upper left, that, right there. This, this thing, on your upper left, right there, right there, yeah. Flip to page two.
That's, that's this thing you're using?
Yeah, page two has the graph, right there. So the far right, second from the left, you have the janitorial parks workers for, for, for part-time.
Far right is Office Assistant.
Yeah, so next one over to the left of that.
Okay.
I would say, you know, it's...
The one above.
Or part-time, do three full-time. Let's just do three full-time, leave one, see how it goes with that. And then combine the, like Mr. Papinow and Mr. Lozano suggested, the, the Facilities Maintenance Workers, instead of one full-time, one part, just do two full, because it just makes more sense. And everything else, I think we just leave it. I don't know, I'm basically, I'm basically giving all but one, they're asking.
All, all the way down? All the way down? So okay, just, just, just for clarification, so, I mean, maybe...
No, I'm just talking about positions, I'm not talking about the other...
Okay, where are we stopping? We're stopping at the one-time capital expense?
No, we're talking about employees right now.
I know, I know. So your approval with adjustments, stopping at one-time capital equipment needs? And those items below that, you're gonna, you wanna discuss separately, I'm trying to make this clear for staff.
We're just talking about employees right now, we started with...
Okay, I just wanna, I just wanna make sure, because when people say everything, that tells me...
No, 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 I meant everything as far as employees, sorry.
Okay, that's great, that's, that's okay, that's, that's my job, I guess. Okay. So, Mr. Vice Mayor?
You know, I trust the Armando's layers, I feel, feel very confident, if it is necessary to be a supervisor position, then I will go for this. And everything else, whatever you guys agree.
Okay, you're good with, with the other parts down below, and the same with two full-time positions in the park maintenance for seven grand?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Lozano has a question.
Hey, Director Solis, I have a question. I kinda like the idea of the converting the 4 part-time, you may have missed that when we, Councilmember Farmer was mentioning it. Converting the 4 part-time to 3 full-time. What does that do in terms of your daily scheduling is...
And that's what we were discussing, 'cause it...
Here's what I, here's what I know, 'cause I've, I've managed part-time staff before. Much more flexibility in terms of hours and location, so, well, what will that do, will that...
So one, one thing it'll do, it'll take the number of hours that I budgeted for the year at 7,488, it would drop it down to 6,240. So I'd be losing 1,248 hours a year, which equals out to 24 hours per week by doing it, by making them 3 full-time.
Okay, I get that, I, I understand there's gonna be savings, not savings of money, but you wouldn't be expending as, as much money, right? Because you would lose that, 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 those billable hours, if you will. I understand that, but what I'm asking about is, not the money, what's that gonna do for your scheduling? I don't, if you were to ask me right now, where would they work? I have kind of a vague idea of what they would be cleaning in terms of janitorial service. But I don't know what that schedule looks like.
So we, our preliminary schedule would be a Thursday through a Monday. So right now, when we rent the facilities, we have nobody on site. What we'd like these people to do is do the pre-check-in, be there during the, the event to keep an eye on the facility. Then they would be there for the post to, to make sure everything, nothing was destroyed, and start the cleanup that night, to be prepared for the next. Currently, with our, with Janitorial at Public Works, we cannot do back-to-back rentals. So if we have a rental on Saturday, we can't rent it again until Monday, because we don't have the staff to come in and clean up. My thought is that we can have, can go back to having back-to-back rentals for these guys by allowing these groups to clean up afterwards, we'll have the staff to do that. They'll also be doing some other items during, during these events. They can help with, if somebody from the park side calls in sick, they could assist with closing parks, things like that. But they would, our initial look is Thursday through Friday, because they also have to clean the, the Chabola Center, the Littleton Center, the Parks and Rec Admin. So we were thinking they would do that over the weekends.
Okay, all right, thank you. You know, I'm not, I'm not ready to really die on that hill, so either... I mean, yeah, it's like, and now I'm thinking about it, it's like, I don't, I'm not trying to be... I mean, yeah, it's like, and now I'm thinking about it, it's like, I don't, I'm not trying to be a for-one position. If you think Four to full-time is better scheduling than Three full-time, whatever. All I know is if we approve what you want and I have a complaint, I'm going to be able to come to it and say, hey, man, what's the deal? And if I go and I say, well, you say, well, you know, if I had that one person that you chopped my 20 hours, I could have whatever. I don't really want to have that conversation, so I don't know. I just want stuff, I just don't want to get emails and texts and people anymore saying, why is this not being done or why is that not being done? So, that's ultimately my goal, right?
Thank you, sir. As it was stated, this is the no-excuse budget. I want to be as frugal as possible, but I I'll just simply say that I will approve or agree to approve everything on the top down to the one-time capital expenses. We'll re, I'll ask again about those. So, I would be okay with with all the positions except with the change of adding the Facility Maintenance Two, Two full-time positions and leave everything as requested above. Yeah. So, that takes care of that. Is that clear enough for staff on the top? Was it one, two, three, four, five items?
I believe so.
Thank you, sir. So, the one-time capital equipment needs, I am not for that item at all. I am not for the operational maintenance needs items at either. And then I want to stop and discuss the bottom, the current general fund support for parks separately. So, is anyone else for or against those two block items?
Mr. Mayor, the capital equipment purchases are the one-time purchases of the equipment so they can have two mowing crews. That's why we're doubling the staff is so they can have two things. So, I think, and I think Mr. Heinz can comment, but I think he was trying to figure out in one of our scenarios how he could cover that as a capital expense that didn't come from Measure Q. But I think all that stuff in there, I mean, I'm not going to sit there and nitpick how many weed eaters we need. I did, I did actually go out, I'm going to admit, I did go out and price weed eaters and blowers at the cost. I'm like, is six blowers really cost $4,000? I looked and honestly, you're pretty close. I mean, it's backpack blowers, yeah. So, I did kind of check some of your numbers. I mean, so I'm just saying I did. But, Mr. Mayor, I'm just saying that without that stuff, I don't know how they even do the work. So, and those are one-time. Those aren't reoccurring.
And I want to add, I believe those are to support the new staff that you're adding.
Okay. So, that's, you're talking about just the top section?
So, all under capital purchases? That is for the whole new, all the red positions you just saw? That's for them, that's for them to do their job?
Okay. Mr. Vice Mayor? Mr. Vice Mayor is for it. Mr. Papinow?
Yes.
He is for it. Mr. Farmer, are you for it?
I believe so, yeah. I mean, we're not going to nitpick and say, well, can you get two trucks cheaper than 70 grand or this and that? I mean, yeah, we could do that, but I think we're just splitting hairs at that point.
Okay. So, that's a majority of the council. So, then the bottom operation maintenance items, is there something I misunderstood on that item?
Well, I had a question about the cap, the professional services, which Mr. Solis answered. It was tree service, and I totally agree. We had to have a conversation before. Is all that stuff necessary? I mean, I don't know. I mean, you know, I think he's just, I think he's just projecting what he thinks it's going to cost. So, if you have a suggestion, Mr. Mayor, on where you think there's something can be trimmed down to $511,000, I'd be open to hearing it.
Well, you know, office supplies seems like those sorts of things all should have... I'm surprised the existing budget can't cover it, I guess is what I'm saying, or I'm wishing it could.
Is weed spraying on there? Weed spraying certification, is that in there?
That's the training. So, what we would do is we currently have...
Definitely not cutting that one.
Well, it's already, it's already budgeted.
Well, it's budgeted currently for three staff members. What we would do is send another three to have a total of six.
I'm just not even, I'm not going to.
Okay.
No, because, well, no, it's, I don't want to get into sideways. I'm trying to clean this up and get on because it's after 10. So, Mr. Vice Mayor, what's your opinion?
No, I'm telling, you might be explaining all these items. This is an extra item, what we're doing right now. But we have a staff, everything we are in the process, right? I think in a budget, and these, all these things, it can be the extra whatever we hiring. Can you just go?
Yeah, I'll go over line by line for you. The training would be, the CPO is a certified pool operator training. The QAC is the spraying training that we would need to send these guys to. The group that you see here are the, is the group that would be called out to answer any of those questions at the Aquatic Center. Office supplies, we just doubled our staffing, our printing and duplicating. If you want to take the 500...
Let's go back to office supply. Right now, we're using 4,200, so that's why we almost adding the other 4,200?
Yeah, I'll have to buy another computer or two to get these guys a workstation.
That's me, this is one time. That's not an operation, a computer does not need for every year.
I probably wouldn't ask for that in the next budget year.
How about we just make this simple, set him go online item? Let's just agree an amount to give him for operating expenses. If he has to go over that and he comes back and asks for a budget change, then we can talk about that then. Right? I mean, could we...
Kevin and Rich, I don't know, did you already prove that, Kevin? The bottom two block items?
No, but I will, I'd be happy to approve it because, you know.
Okay.
Got to have uniforms for the guys and, yeah.
So, you approve those, Mr. Farmer?
Well, I mean, these are just estimates. So, it's like if I say yes, then they're going to find a way to spend $511,000 no matter what, right? If I say I'll give you $450,000, they're going to do their best to give $450,000. I'm just saying, I'm being honest. So, I mean, I don't know.
It, again, it boils down, do you not want the trees trimmed? We'll cut that. That's $60,000.
No, no, I didn't say that, but I'm just saying, obviously, we don't know until we go through this one time, right?
Well, the fuels and, let me tell you what you have to have.
Is this all this based on what you're already doing? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Let me tell you what you have to have. We're doubling the solid waste, so I need another $88,000. The vehicle repair, they're going to have to have their oils changed. If I need a tire, you're going to have to have that. Equipment repair maintenance, we need to maintain the blowers, the mowers, all those things. Change the filters, change the blades. Building repair maintenance, I'm going to utilize that for all the stuff that are in the parks, the bathrooms, things like that that need to be repaired that haven't been repaired in the past 10 years. Postage and freight, you want to cut that, that's not a necessary. The telecommunications, I need these guys to have cell phones to have with them. They're going to need, I believe the licensing's come out of that further, like the outlook and things like that. Professional service, as we discussed, the main items are $60,000 worth of tree service, $10,000 worth of light repairs. We have some at Lake Canyon that are just hanging, but we can't retrofit them. So, we'd have to replace them. We didn't have the money. I'd like to do that now. $12,000 is for graffiti, for the graffiti abatement contract. And then $10,000 for gopher abatement. And those are things that I feel that we need.
Let me stop you right there. I have a question. The one that kind of jumps out at me though is the equipment repair and maintenance. You're basically going to buy roughly, I'm just doing some fast math here, about $100,000 in equipment. That's not including trucks, that's just mowers, weed eaters, and blowers. But you're saying that you think you need $26,000 to maintain them on a yearly basis. That's 25% of the purchase cost every year. I think that's probably a little high. But again, I don't want to split hairs, but I just think that number's probably a little inflated. But I get that you're probably just predicting. I mean, if you were telling me you went, you're like, last year, this is how many mowers and blowers we had, and this is how much we spent, so I'm just doubling that, then I would take, I would absolutely agree with you.
That's what we've done here. We, because we're really, we only, we have six blowers right now. We have two trailers, we have six weed eaters, we have six mowers. That is what our budget is. And I mean, if Lorenzo, even when he first started here, I told him I have nothing to give up in my budget, and he looked at my budget and says, yeah, you're... We have nothing. Our budget is minimal. And now that we have Measure Q, I'm not going to be asking for things I don't need. I'm going to ask you for things to get the job done.
Mr. Lozano, your opinion? Sorry, go ahead.
Oh, those are the amounts that you forecast. You know, this is what we need in case something breaks so we can have the opportunity to fix it. And that's what causes the driver, the difference between what we budget for the transfer to subsidize the funds and the actual difference. It's not that we're automatically going to spend that amount of money, but, you know, it could be that, you know, we've got new equipment, so we're budgeting that amount. And we say we only spend $20,000, so there's $6,000 savings there. That would reduce the amount of subsidy that fund receives.
Okay, I understand. Thank you. Mr. Lozano, do you have an opinion?
I always have an opinion, never let it go untold. I think if they need the equipment, they need it. And we use the budget process to help them with it. Yeah, I would say some of these numbers do look staggering, but, you know, every time I go to fill up my gas tank, it is staggering. And so, I know costs are rising. And again, we're not approving the dollar amount tonight, but I would certainly, as I ask all the time, every one of our departments to start from their pencils where they can. So, I would, I would be in favor of them coming back at some point through budget process to, for approval.
Okay, that makes three. Correct me if I'm wrong, that makes three, and that's consensus. So, that item as well. And then, so the last item here is Fund, what is, Fund 06, 032, 033, 037. If I understand this correctly, you're asking Measure Q to cover all these costs. I would prefer that it cover none of these costs. How does my fellow council members feel?
I don't feel I should, I already stated, I don't feel I should cover all of them. I think there's maybe some compromise in there, but I don't, I don't, I don't feel that Measure Q should be covering. I mean, if you want to backfill the subsidy, the general, the 06 subsidy, I think the, I think the right thing to do would be to do one or the other. I don't know. I mean, obviously, one's more than the other, but they're pretty close. So, if 01 wants, if 01 Fund wants to continue to pay the lighting and landscape costs, and then we'll give back the 06 or vice versa, I'd be willing. But I agree with you, and I don't want it to do both. I don't, I don't, I don't feel comfortable with Measure Q picking up all of it, not at this time. I feel like there's too many expenses that we need to do with Measure Q money right now.
Yeah, if we're going to hopefully, you know, scrape up some cash to, for Measure Q and these funds, this is 2.13 million, you know. If you wanted to borrow a little bit from whatever fund, which we express some interest in, that would give us, you know, three or maybe four million dollars to get something substantial done.
I vividly remember a conversation now that it comes to me where we talked about deciding whether or not we want to continue the subsidy from the general fund for maybe a short time and then kind of wean ourselves off of it. We did talk about that, and I think that's what we should do. We should maybe keep it in place, keep the subsidy in place and for maybe at least the first year or maybe the first two. And then, you know, that we can knock off some of these, some of these things we want to take care of and then wean ourselves off of that. Maybe that'd be a future discussion.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Lozano.
In terms of the, because on the bottom of our page, it says current general fund support for parks. And then lists all those funds. I would be in favor, at least for the next year, till we get to our full budget cycle a year from now, to fund 06 out of that and then the lighting and landscape districts out of Measure Q dollars.
That would save roughly $630,000.
Save 1.5 million.
1.5.
We're just saying it backwards, but okay, sorry, I shouldn't have interrupted.
That's my thought. And I think we could use some Measure Q money for other things that we're interested in.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Vice Mayor.
I think they're like in Fund 06, we should use the other Fund 32, 33, 37. Should keep the same, what we're doing is separate from the Measure Q.
So, you're pro having Measure Q pay 1.5 million dollars to the general fund? That's what I'm understanding, Mr. Lozano and yourself to agree to?
Yes.
Opposite. Okay, so you, Mr. Lozano wants to cover only the bottom three funds?
And not from 1.5?
Let me explain my position, it might help. We just talked about all of these expenses going to landscape maintenance, which in the Measure Q resolution was one of our priorities. So, what I'm saying is, is that Measure Q, I believe, should pay for Fund 32, 33, and 37, which are lighting and landscape district funds. And then for this year, until we get to our full two-year cycle on the budget, we should continue the 1.5, 12, yeah, 1.5 million into Fund 06. That help?
You said that funny at the end, but...
General fund.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify, just so I understand, the conversation's going across the dais. I'm hearing the proposal to fund 32, 33, and 37 with Measure Q, the new funds. And I'm also hearing...
Let's stop right there. Does, do you guys agree with that?
I would, I would go along with that.
Rich agrees with that? Mr. Vice Mayor, do you agree with that? Mr. Papinow, do you agree with that?
I started out the reverse to fund Six out of Measure Q and keep funding 32, 33, and 37 out of the general fund.
So, that's a no? You said you started out reverse, so I'm not sure what you're...
Under the possible bond plan, wasn't it to keep 32, 33, and 37 coming out of the general fund?
Yes, sir.
That's what I wanted to do.
I like your idea, Rich, because it leaves, out of the two amounts, the bigger amount stays in Measure Q. Lighting landscapes are the cheaper, so let's pay for the, if we're going to pay for one of them out of Measure Q, let's do those. And those numbers are going to be high based on what I learned, I think.
I don't think so, but three of my fellow council members agreed to have Measure Q pay for those bottom three items, yes? That's consensus, that's, yeah, I just want to try and hammer it down. So, that's consensus on, for the council, so it's a done deal?
Right. I just wanted to confirm that the subsidy for the general fund for Fund Six continues?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, right, and I was going to hit that one next. So, the subsidies for Fund Six continues, Mr. Farmer just said in the affirmative. Mr. Lozano, you agree?
I do just for this, this year, until we can get to a full...
Vice Mayor, do you agree? Mr. Papinow? Okay, he does not agree. Measure Q should not be putting 1.5 million dollars into the general fund ever, I think. So, the answer is no. Yeah, you don't want it to, you don't want it to, at least for one year? Yeah. I guess, I guess I keep, in my mind, I keep stating it backwards. And it makes sense to me, maybe because I'm dyslexic, I don't know. But anyway.
Yeah. I'm just going to go one round through so we can get clarification because I know the clerks want...
Yeah, that's what I'm trying, I'm trying to help her out, but...
Because that way, when she listens to the tape, she can listen to one fine thing at the end despite all of the turns in between. As far as, I'm looking at page three of the PowerPoint presentation. It lists five personnel items and then one item of capital equipment and one item of operations and maintenance for a total of $1,718,760. As that's been presented and recommended by staff, the council by consensus is approving those items, correct?
Actually, no. No, just to clarify.
No, 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 you're getting us off into the weeds. We're not even talking about that. No offense.
That's actually what we did, you just did talk about.
Yeah, but we made an adjustment to that in the section below. All of that value is what we're discussing now. It has nothing to do with any of the items above it. And that, which is a total of 1.7 million.
So, I think they approved the entire 1.7 with the exception of making sure those supervisors, I think there was a $7,000...
Discrepancy.
Well, let's not call it discrepancy, but $7,000 adjustment to bring one full-time, part-time position to full-time.
Yes.
Other than that, the one...
And, and... And the 341 capital expenditures, the lawn mowers and all that stuff. And the 341 capital expenditures, the lawn mowers and all that stuff, was gonna come from 01.
Yeah, I didn't want them.
That's, that's what I...
Yeah, I, I know, and that's, and that's why I went through, tried to go through these items a little bit at a time, so...
He's just re-clarifying.
I know, but we made adjustments to it, so it's not...
You guys can say, that's how I feel you're...
Okay, I'll, I'll ask the clerk, Madam Clerk. Do you have, or staff, do you have an understanding of the top portion of all this, below the, the four items at the bottom?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, so...
Okay, yes.
Do you have, you have clarification on the bottom?
Capital equipment and operations and maintenance, where I need clarification on Fund 6 and the LOB.
Right, so we...
Oh, Jay, you missed a big one, 341,000. Is that gonna get paid for out of Measure Q, or is that coming out of Fund 01, because there was talk about both earlier in the presentation?
We, we approved that block.
But we, as written.
As written, right?
Yeah. All right, it's coming out of Measure Q, I think that was an oversight, but go ahead. Ship sailed, I guess.
Technically, it did not, but, and that's okay, the other, okay, so...
There was an offer for him to pay that out of 01, so I'm only suggesting, there was an offer earlier to pay that out of 01.
I honestly missed that, I don't know why, I was thinking about the process here.
Counselor, real quick, we can just all say yes or no, which fund, and we can be, we can move on?
Okay, so let's, let's do that, that's, if I missed it, that's my bad, and so, operation and maintenance needs, I apologize to staff. Do you want to fund it out of 01, or 06, I mean, yeah?
I would like 01.
You would like 01?
Quasi-whatever-you-said-it-was purchase, so let's do that.
Okay, I agree with Mr. Farmer, Mr. Lozano?
So, are we talking about the capital, or are we talking about the O and M?
Talking about the capital.
Can, can I add a clarification too? Measure Q is a, a general tax, so it'll be recorded in General Fund.
Yeah.
So we'll report it when we come through and, and bring this item as a, a budget item in the future, and show where the clarification is. But I just want to clarify, when we show it in the future, that Measure Q is part of General Fund.
It's the capital equipment expenses, just to clarify, that's what I'm talking about, 341,000 for trucks, mowers, weed eaters, blowers, trailers, one-time expense. It was suggested that that could be made, not out of Measure Q money, but out of, out of the 01, to not impact the, the Measure Q money, it could be made as a quasi-one-time purchase, he described it as, so that's what I'm suggesting, I just want to clarify. Unless the count, unless the four of you don't want to do that, or...
No.
Does that make, does it, do you understand, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Lozano, do you agree with that adjustment?
Here's what I would say. This is, this is stuff that we're asking them to do out of Measure Q, the job, right? All of these capital needs are to do recreation, or, I'm sorry, landscape maintenance, so why would we, why wouldn't we have that come out of Measure Q?
Because it's 341,000 more dollars we could put towards what we're trying to do with Measure Q money in the first year. That's, that's a big chunk of money right there, 340 grand.
Yeah, it is, but we gotta, we gotta give them the equipment to do the job.
Well, we're gonna give them the equipment...
And that's the exact...
No, I'm, I'm not saying not buy it, I'm saying buy it, but I want to clarify where, where the money's coming from.
I'm not gonna have a discussion about that, but what I will say is, that just needs to come out of Measure Q. That's my opinion.
Vice Mayor, your opinion. Okay, Mr. Pompano, you, you also want to see it come out of Measure Q?
Yep, it's for mowing lawns, and that's what it was for.
You know what, because it is for parks and recs and mowing lawn, I want it to come out of Measure Q as well, and so we're, we're just, that's what we originally discussed, is that clear, Madam Clerk or staff? Okay, so then, the City Council has agreed, by consensus, to pay, or am I saying it backwards again, for pay for the, the three lighting and landscaping funds out of Measure Q? Correct? But not the top-line item? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Only, only one person gave a timeframe, so no. That's consensus by the group. Think I did it.
You did a great job. I'd recommend, next time, we reference whatever page we're all looking at, because I think some people are looking at PowerPoints, some people are looking at graphs.
I, to be honest, I did, and actually held it up, I tried to do that, because I, I was worried about that exact thing, and for me, it was much easier to look at all of this on one sheet. So I appreciate the pointer, pointers at any time, I really do.
And just want to make sure Lorenzo, Tina, Armando, Matt, you guys are good?
I believe we are, if not, we'll go, we'll look at the tape.
Okay, so with that, we can move on to Parks and Recreation Department, L4. Subject is City of Galt Special Events Sponsorship Applications Review Fiscal Year 2023-2024.
Counselor, don't worry, it's only a 25-page PowerPoint, and Jackie gave up and went home, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to give this presentation. So, tonight before you, you have the Special Events Sponsorship Program Review. At the last council meeting, you were able to ask questions, get feedback from the groups that were, that were asking for the money, I'm just gonna, you've seen this, it's up there, it's on TV, if you want to go to the next page. Here's a recap of the money that was being asked for. And then, so the recommendation would be, next slide, Lorenzo, is to review the Special Events Sponsorship Request for Fiscal Year 23-24, and provide direction to the approval of events, monetary amounts, and/or in-kind contributions. I know I went over that quick, but I'd like to, I'll just take any questions if you have them. Lorenzo, can you just go back to the dollar amounts? Sure. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, if you can look at page two of two of the staff report, it has a grid that shows the estimated cost totals of 28,808,000 dollars, and with another, and that's hard costs with another 2, 2,250 dollars in soft costs. You've got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 events that are submitted for your approval. Should the City Council approve all eight events at the request of the amounts, the estimated hard costs, as I mentioned, would be a certain amount, and soft costs a certain amount, for a combined total of 31,058.04. And this would be a higher amount than you've approved in the past. Is that correct, Dr. Director Solis? Yes, the current budget is 7,500 dollars. And so we would go from 7,500,000 to 31,058.04? Or you can deliberate and start eliminating?
Well, my...
I'd like to make a suggestion.
Yeah, my, my gut statement here is that we're setting the standard for future years, so go ahead, Mr. Farmer.
Well, as I suggested at the last meeting, we're talking about ARPA, I suggested we take the remaining 60-some thousand dollars that was left over from the nonprofit grant, and we fund these items here, and we take the other half of it, and we fund the items for next year, and then that's the end of it. It's, then it's all going to nonprofits, everybody here's a nonprofit, it's all going where we intended it to go in the first place.
Thank you, sir, does any other council members have a comment?
I'm fine with using some of that 66,000 to fund the increase from last year. I'd be hesitant to say that we'll commit that much for next year, because we have, need to see proposals for next year, and, you know, see some decisions. Put it up there, and as we said earlier, it will be spent.
So, so you're saying approve 24,000? And, well, that's the over and above.
Essentially, the delta between the budget of 7,500 and the ask of 31,058, so that's, that's the delta.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm saying to make that up out of the aforementioned 66,000 dollars of ARPA.
Right, right.
Okay, so 66 goes down to 40, 42? Okay? Okay? And for one year only? Because next year, it's a whole different group of requests?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the proposal on the floor, gentlemen, forgive me for...
No, no, you're, you're good, I, I was deep in thought there, and I've, it's, I'm, I'm a little cautious about jumping that high, and I know it's not a huge chunk of money. At the same time, like I said, you're setting a new standard, like, well, you did it last year, what's wrong with you this year, don't you like our city? So, I, I actually, I like what Mr. Pompano suggested. What does anybody else have thoughts? Yes, there is public comment, would you like to speak, sir, you go right ahead.
What I disagree with is the renting of the cones and renting of the signs, that wasn't on last year's budget. Now it's being transferred into these. To me, it should not hit on these numbers at all. Said I, 06 money is gonna pay for those cones when they're replaced.
Those, those, yeah, go ahead, sir, sorry.
And the rental fees that are collected on them are not gonna pay for those future cones, so all we're doing is doing a shell game, moving the money again. That's my comment, and I think that would take that number down to a more reasonable number.
Those, those items are depreciated, so they are covered in, in that fashion, yes or no?
Yes.
So is it fair to remove that, that value from each item?
I don't feel comfortable commenting on whether it's fair, I mean, that's the council's purview.
Sure, sure. Do you have a rough idea of what that total would be?
I'm sorry, I don't tonight, but we can correct it, I think that's, well, the city attorney's not here, but I think we would probably be within our limits to take that, if there's consensus, to remove that.
Does any council members have thoughts on that?
Yeah, I, and I, I think I understand what Mr. Brosman's saying, this, my understanding of putting it in there is for self-saving. We're putting into, we're taking money from wherever it's being funded from within the city, and putting into a, for lack of a better word, a savings account, so that we can replace items. I think the question for me is, is, and I, and I like that idea, because if you go through our budgets for over several years, the reason we have some of the capital issues that we have is because we haven't saved as a, as a city. And so I like the idea. The question I would have is, is, and again, you guys can figure out how that works, but can we make sure that that money is actually saved for replacing of items, rather than going just back into the General Fund and bringing reused again, does that make sense?
For most of the reusable items, like we talked about cones, we wouldn't set up like a special designated fund balance for that, that would go into just the undesignated, and then we would have that available when we need to purchase those.
How about this, how about a, I don't want to tell you how to do your job, but I just have an idea here. How about an Excel spreadsheet that identifies the amount of money we've collected over that?
We could track that.
Does that make sense? I just don't want that money, I, I want to be able to say, hey, how much money, at budget time, have we collected for capital improvement on items related to, not only this, but maybe rentals that we, you know, I don't know if we've charged for rent, you know, when we rent facilities out, or anything like that?
For most of the, the rental fee wouldn't be a, a significant amount to
Okay.
track that.
My, my question would be that, if we're gonna charge these organizations for X dollar for a sign, X dollar for an A-frame, such and such and so on, I mean, the labor is a separate issue, right, that's manpower, that's obviously, but all these little, you know, we'll call it rental fees or depreciation fees, whatever, are we charging ourselves that when Parks and Rec uses it for the Saturday market? I think not. So we're gonna accumulate that money, but yet, they're wearing that stuff out, probably more often than these nonprofits are wearing out, but the nonprofits and these people are the ones paying for the replacement value of those products, and I don't think that's fair. I would rather see those items not be depreciated in such a way, and when they wear out and they're broke, regardless of who was using them, whether it was, we used them more than the nonprofits or whatever, that it comes back and Public Works says, we need some new signs, here's what we need, and we approve their ballot, and we, we buy them. It just seems simpler to me. But, that's just me.
Anybody else?
Yeah, just, just to that point, and I, and I would agree with that in, in concept, however, we're not asking any, a, a nonprofit to pay for any of this, we're, we're, we're paying for it, and we're putting it back into our own savings, so I would agree that if we're gonna charge, I, I don't know, pick the number, the, the top one, I guess, no, that's not a good idea. Anyhow, any, any of those on there where those items are being used, and we were to say, hey, we're gonna, you know, we're not going to do a sponsorship, and you have to pay for it, then I think we need to look, look at it a little differently, but if we're paying it back to ourselves, I think it's a great idea to, a way to save, so that they don't have to come back to us and ask for, I don't, hundred dollars for...
So, do we have consensus to use the funds, as Mr. Pompano suggested, less the fees of those items?
This year, right?
For this year, for one year? That's two, Mr. Lozano? Mr. Pompano?
So we'd be, I mean, we're paying for it here, or we're paying for it from somewhere.
Yeah, we're paying ourselves anyway, but...
Yeah, what you said makes a lot of sense, Rich, absolutely, I get it. I'm only concerned with, here we go, well, we're gonna approve them anyway, so technically, we're paying for it, right, but what happens next year or the year after, when somebody comes for an event and the street closure costs 8,000 dollars when it used to cost less, and they're not gonna get approved for that? See, and that's, 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 that's when those costs are gonna matter then, so, but I, I agree, let's just keep it simple, let's just approve it the way it is, or whatever. I guess we can cross...
I, I'm confused, I thought you were, were in agreement on what I just suggested, but you're not?
No, let's just fund it the way it is.
Okay, so there's one to fund it, you want to fund it the way it is as well, Mr. Lozano?
I would like to see this funded for this year, and have that commitment for this year, minus the, what is it, 70, whatever the, the difference is with what's budgeted,
Okay, so we have 24,000, I'm sorry, sir.
That's okay, go ahead.
Just gonna pipe in, just so, because, you know, I gotta make sure my people understand what's going on here. 24,000 is the, is the amount of funding from ARPA, the 66 that we set aside. We will also remove all depreciable costs out of the hard cost or soft cost columns, and whatever the resultant number is, we will, we will fund with ARPA above the 7,500. So even though we have initially indicated that it would be about 24,000, it actually could be less in ARPA.
Yep, that, that's what I was suggesting. So, Mr. Pompano, you agree with that?
Sure.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yes.
That's consensus. Thank you, everyone, so now we can move on to communications?
None this evening.
Thank you. Sorry. Comments by staff?
Yes, Director Selling?
Yeah, I'll make this real quick. Just a couple of responses on a couple of public comments earlier, and I spoke to the gentleman right afterwards. On the ADA parking issues for the Saturday Market Special Events, we will be providing four designated spots, we'll work with P and R staff to, to set that up. So that'll take care of the ADA issue. The other thing, on responding to the trip hazards, we had already responded, but I will have our crew go back out and check the area that he alerted me to, and I just want to say that I always appreciate the public when they point out things, because we can't be everywhere and see everything and catch it all, so I, I appreciate these kinds of comments, so. Last thing, I just want to put in a, a plug for Hazard, Household Hazardous Waste and E-Waste Event that's coming up a week from Saturday on May 6th. I think we've got about 50 spots left open, so... Uh, last thing, I just want to put in a, a plug for Hazard, Household Hazardous Waste and E-Waste Event that's coming up a week from Saturday on May 6th, um, I think we've got about 50 spots left open, so if anybody's interested, uh, get online and, uh, get your spot, because you have to have a reservation in order to drop off your stuff, so, and that's from, I think, 8:30 to 12:30 on the 6th, thank you.
Chief Kalanowski?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, um, we started our Citizens Academy last, um, Wednesday, we had a good turnout, we had 20 people signed up, I think 16 or 17, some are here tonight, are here tonight, um, that are participating, it was a good group, I intended on, uh, just welcoming folks and then sliding out, but, uh, my staff, uh, was doing such a remarkable job and had me in awe, I stayed the whole time, so, I learned about traffic stops and other things like that, so, it was, it was sincerely a good time. The second thing is, I heard the dialogue earlier about the incident that the sheriff's office had that we helped them with, and, um, I'll bring some additional information back to you, um, and I'd encourage you to look at other social media platforms about this all-clear concept, um, I know we had this come up with the homicide on McFarland, where we found a suspect vehicle about a mile away, and we were still missing a suspect, uh, in that situation, we may have not said that at the time, but if it's not clear, I'm not going to say it's clear, and in this one was a sheriff's office detail where they did not capture the individual, they were out in the county, but because there was some stuff going on, somebody thought they heard something in their backyard, we do not have the bandwidth to, um, uh, to chase those, I mean, we addressed that issue with the sheriff's office and provided some support, but, um, commenting on other agencies' investigations and the status of that is not a place I want to go, and second of all, because the subject wasn't located, um, I can't give an all-clear, so, uh, you know, there's some liability components with that, so I'd like to work with our social media consultants that we use, that partner with many law, well, several law enforcement agencies in California and across the nation about the approach, um, and our diligence on that topic, so, more to come on that, I just want to leave it there for tonight, it's been a long night, so.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
That's it for staff comments, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hines, oh, no, Armando?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Okay, all right, I, I thought, I thought we, okay, go ahead, yeah.
I just want to address a couple of things, uh, Mr. Lee brought up fire extinguishers at the Saturday Market, every food truck is, uh, required to have one by regulation, we have a first aid, uh, first aid kit and fire extinguisher at our market booth, uh, that we have next to the stage, and then, um, so I wanted to bring that up, uh, Mr. Lee also brought up festivals at the Galt Market Grounds, we actually have our shredded event, uh, this Saturday, I'm stealing, uh, the clerk's lender, and then the following Saturday, we have a, a shoe and clothing expo on that Saturday on the market ground, so we are utilizing the, the market grounds for things, uh, Sunday, the 23rd, we have a pop-up play at Community Park for Peter Pan, I just wanted to bring those things to your attention, and thank you for, uh, approving the items before, appreciate it.
You're welcome, no excuses, brother.
And I believe that concludes our comments.
Thank you, com, comments by City Council members of, members and future agenda items, uh, Vice Mayor?
Uh, thank you for staff, for their good report, detailed report, for hardworking, and also thank you for everybody for the public, uh, public comments, and that's all tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Papanow.
I am happy to see this, uh, field use, uh, issue being taken up where it should have started with the Park and Rec Commission, I frankly think that we, as a council, mishandled it by trying to negotiate it from up here, and in various meetings and email strings that lord knows where they went, um, it's kind of like governance by that telephone game when you're a kid, so, um, to that, I spoke with, uh, several people who were in the meeting that was mentioned between the school district and the city, and then some people that were not in there, and who apparently heard what they wanted to hear, because I really didn't get the same account, uh, from any of the people, so, people who were not in the meeting, as I said, I think hear what they want to hear, and unfortunately, it catches fire, to the point where, yesterday I heard in the community, that two council members, uh, two city staff, two people from the, uh, school district, uh, or one from each district, got together and concluded that due to declining enrollment, we were going to get together and close one elementary and one high school, and that actually caught on and was spread around, um, it's just, it's unfortunate, this is no way to carry out governance by rumors in the community, and I really hope that this thing, when it gets to the commission, can have a once-and-for-all, uh, sorting out and a solid recommendation that we can do, and unfortunately, we might have to say no to some things. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir, uh, Councilman Farmer?
Just one thing, um, our last meeting, we talked about, uh, um, Mr. Lozano brought forward the idea about the Key to the City program, and so, I wanted to run by the council a thought of who our first recipient could be, I know it's a little bit premature, the program's not deployed, but we lost, uh, Mr. Wendell Halk yesterday, he was 102 years old, he actually was a Galt police officer for 40 years, he was a World War II veteran, served in multiple places, and he lived in Galt his entire life, and he was part of a family that's been in Galt for generations and generations, so, he came, seems to kind of check a lot of boxes, it would be posthumously, of course, because he passed yesterday, but just wanted to see, the council would consider that, once we get that up and operational, if we consider him because of his service to the community as both police officer and, and because of his age and his ties to the community, so, that's, uh.
I would, thank you, sir, anybody else? That's consensus.
And then the second thing is a future agenda item, there had been discussion about, uh, maybe getting with the chief and forming some sort of ad hoc, um, regarding, um, homeless discussion, so if maybe staff could bring forward an agenda item soon at some point to, uh, discuss the formation of such a committee as the chief discussed, would there be any consensus to have that as brought back as an agenda item?
I would support that. Vice Mayor, you support that as well? And, Mr. Papanow as well?
I, I would say that, um, I, I think we need to move forward on it, um, but I believe Ms. Daly is going to come back to staff with some additional items that we asked for, and then based on that, I think we could have a better discussion, so, um, I would like to see it come back, but, um, she has a little bit of homework to do, and so I'd like to see us discuss it after that input that we've asked for, yeah.
Yeah, is, but I just, um, well, the chief was just, he said that he wanted to, he was saying it would be helpful if we had a committee formed, see, and he was requesting at that, could we do that, so, obviously, Ms. Daly's information would be critical, so, whichever, however we do it, but I just wanted to bring it back at some point, so, thank you.
Mr. Lozano?
Yeah, I don't, um, have anything, um, to, any, anything really more to add, other than I want to thank, uh, uh, the Park and Rec staff and finance and Public Works and everybody, uh, City Manager's Office for putting together their, um, and brainstorming the Measure Q proposals, um, I think that was good work, and, and really appreciate, um, you bringing it forward, as well as, I think the community is really going to start to see a difference, and, um, and that's important to not only me, but I'm sure all, all of my colleagues and, and certainly the, um, folks in the community, so, thank you all for all that, um, and, and, uh, Mr. Hoffman, thank you for Site 18, that was painless, I appreciate it, and I know you don't have a lot of control over how that happens or what happens with that, but, um, yet another state mandate that goes unfunded, so, um, that's all I have, thanks.
Thank you, sir, uh, I'd like to thank all the public comment and staff for, uh, well, putting up for all, with all of this, and, uh, democracy is beautiful, with that, I end the meeting at 10:51 PM.